Good afternoon and welcome to a city council workshop, a regular workshop meeting. Today is October 24th. It is 2:00 PM in the afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time and ask, we'll have some different presentations being made by some in the audience and you can introduce yourselves when you come to the table with us, please, and we'll go around the table today. I'm Bob Severance, Mayor, and I go to Councilman Omburg.
Rick Omburg, Councilmember.
Tara Eisen, Councilmember.
Jim Wiesner, Councilmember.
Elaine O'Bourn, City Administrator.
Beth Mans, Mayor Proton.
Bill Larson, Councilmember.
Erica Wossinger, Councilmember.
Got a pretty complete group here. I guess we're missing one, are we?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Jones.
Councilor Servatius. So, we will start this afternoon with our Director of Human Resources, Emma House, in the audience. Emma?
I'm here to introduce our latest and greatest new employees, and three of them that I would like to ask to stand up. They're all from public works and I'm going to give them a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Albert. We're in the Streets Department, started on October 1st. I work for waste water and storm drains. I'm Dusken Croucher and I work for Water.
So, please give us a little.
Go back to work.
We're just downstairs.
Okay, we will now go to our second agenda item under community presentations. Today we have our Island County Senior Resources with us in the audience, and I will let them introduce themselves. It looks like we've just got one here. Sharon?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for making time for me today. I'm Sharon Weiser and you have before you some materials that will update you. I'll talk about that a little bit more. I'd like to also acknowledge our Vice President of our Board of Directors back here, June Naylin, is attending also today. So, the purpose of my coming before you today is really a little bit of update and more to ask you questions, and you've got those questions, I believe. So, I know we don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to give you just a little bit of highlights about where we are. What you have here in your envelope is all of our wrap cards and brochures that you can take away and take a look at at your convenience. I've also given you several other documents here. The top two, along with my card, which in case you have an additional thought after we talked today about the needs of seniors or adults with disabilities in Oak Harbor, please feel free to email me. I wanted to give some highlights of some of what we're doing this year, one of which has to do with our Aging and Disability Resources, which is the top one-pager that you've got. I want to really spend just a couple minutes or a minute on that, is that we used to call that information and assistance, and I think some of you who've been on the council for quite a while, or even just last year, may have thought, well, that's what they do, is information and assistance. We now have several different types of programs bundled under Aging and Disability Resources, and I think one of the things that everyone really needs to understand is that we're not only serving seniors, but we're also serving adults with disabilities. And under this program is a Family Caregiver Support Program, as well as several other programs aimed at supporting seniors and their caregivers. What we've been able to do in the last couple months is staff up a little bit in this, because for the first time, the Northwest Regional Council that provides some of the funding for these programs recognized that though we have a small overall population in Island County, in terms of about 80,000 people, and that's what in all 45 years that we've been doing this, they've been identifying the funding we get against the total population, for the first time ever they're doing it against the percentage of seniors, which makes a rather large difference because we have the highest percentage of seniors of any of the counties in the Northwest region. So, as a result, we have one full-time staff person here in Oak Harbor related to Aging and Disability Resources, and there are three other staff who provide some part-time assistance here. So, we've really staffed up, and this community produces the highest number of stats for these programs in any part of Northwest Washington. That's Watcomb, Skagit, Island, and San Juan Counties. So, there's a lot of activity here related to these programs. The second page I provided you is, and these are all 2018 statistics, is on nutrition, and we provide the Meals on Wheels here out of Oak Harbor, as well as congregate meals. There's some summary stats at the bottom, and the one thing I would call your attention to is that we also provide by doctor recommendation insurer for people who can no longer eat typically, or are suffering from something that they need some additional boost in their nutrition, and all of that is directed out at the South Whidby Center. So, the South Whidby stats are a little higher because all the insurers located in those statistics at this point. We also thank you for making available the Double Wide, to have our Time Together Program, the Adult Day Services Program, that started there a year ago April, expanded to a second day in February, and we're hoping to go to a third day in the coming year. One of the interesting things that we've learned here as a result of that program is that more adults with disabilities are using that program than seniors, and we've spent some real time on that. So, that's going to be my segue here. Any questions up to now, because I really want to talk to you about our strategic planning and get your input from that. Yeah?
Making available the Double Wide, can you, what is that? Where is that?
Right next to the Senior Center.
Okay.
Right next to the Senior Center. So, it's been great to be able to have that additional programming up here. So, as some of you already know, we're involved in a strategic planning process that is aimed at providing a new strategic plan for 2019 to 2021, and you are the third council that we've spoken with on the island. We've spoken with, by the time we get through, we will have spoken with somewhere between 60 and 70 different groups across Island County, and we're learning a lot. And all of what we're learning, along with our number crunching, et cetera, is going to help us shape how we're going to move forward in the next three years. So, this is your chance to influence that. And I sent out, I think Carla gave, sent out to you a set of questions from me, and I recognize we don't have a lot of time, but I'll take some high-level input from any of you. What are the needs that you are seeing in your community for seniors and adults with disabilities? What would you name as the greatest needs here?
I think a lot of seniors that have been independent, they haven't looked for resources,
and it isn't until they're in that situation and they really don't know where to go. Case in point, I had a neighbor, lost her husband, and now she's not the greatest cook, but the Meals on Wheels was great. But, you know, talking to her and then bringing her the information, I mean, she really, she was too busy and too full of life to go to the Senior Center to find out any of this, because she had other things to do. And so, to me, I think that's the hardest, is people don't realize what they're going to need, or even where to go for the information. So, I don't know, you know, if they're involved in a church, just making sure the church, churches have your resources, that they can, because they help their parishioners.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't.
More outreach.
More outreach, I think.
Okay.
Because sometimes you just, you don't know what you need until you need it, and it's like, oh, my gosh, they panic, where do I go?
And we see that a lot, yeah.
When they used to have the feet doctor.
The foot clinic?
Clinic and that kind of thing, and then the Double Wide, let's see, Island Thrift provided it, and it was used for something else, and then it was Restless Care, so that people had a break once during the week, and I mean, so it's evolved. But, I think that's the biggest thing, is more outreach. I don't know the answer to that, but somehow, and maybe through, you're saying you're talking to the community groups, I would also include the churches, or at least, I think there's a group of pastors that get together, that they have it so that they can help get out that information, because that's usually, someone is going to know someone that needs help, and hopefully they'll know where to reach out. But if they haven't used it, but at least if you've got a few key people, I think that would help, is the outreach part.
Okay.
Where they can.
Very helpful, Bill, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
First off, thank you much for all you do here in the county. I've known several people who've been touched by things that you guys have done. Unfortunately, I have to agree with Beth, the biggest problem, challenge you have, is getting the information out there. In fact, I like to think that I'm not ignorant, but, you know, I wasn't quite aware of some of the services provided that you've got just listed here in this package myself. In the business I'm in, I interact with a lot of folks that are getting rid of their estate towards the time to retire or head into the sunlight, and I think what I do hear from a lot of them is they're not aware of the services. Some of them, of course, aren't looking so hard because of, I think, the proudness factor, I guess we'll have to call it. And so, outreach is certainly important. The other thing I get really frustrated with that I see some of the seniors I have to deal with going through at that stage of their life is the whole telemarketing and the.
Scamming.
The scamming. You know, you think, well, you know, how can they take advantage of these people, but it happens. It happens, and it happens to people who are very sharp and people who have, you know, had a fruitful life and, you know, you would think, wouldn't fall for it. You know, so I don't know that, you know, I guess that goes hand-in-hand with the outreach part, right of it.
Outreach part, sure.
Information, I think, is key to folks at that stage. I agree with also Beth on the fact that, you know, there's community groups out there and associations out there that maybe you can partner with.
Leverage.
Leverage to get the information out. You know, the Lions Club, for example, very heavily in helping people out with wheelchairs and et cetera, which is typically maybe the onset of an issue that could, you know, require further assistance, you know, and there are people that, you know, people reach out to in town along with the church groups. But again, I commend you for what you're doing, quite an impressive.
Thank you very much.
Impressive package. That's about.
And we know there's a whole wave coming, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Also, along with saying lines, I think that sometimes people who aren't necessarily seniors, but people who are, you know, children, family members, neighbors of seniors who recognize that a senior may need some assistance with Meals on Wheels, or healthcare, or access to something, you know, that they need that maybe they don't, that we could be helpful, you know. You know, I have an example, a neighbor, not my neighbor, but a family member's neighbor who is all by herself. I mean, she doesn't have a family in town, and, you know, it's sometimes it's like, well, what could I offer her? What information could I give her, or my family? So, it's a broader range, I think, than just the seniors themselves, knowing where to turn.
So, just a real community awareness of what.
Yeah, more a community to look out for each other and know that these services are out there, where to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Other needs that sort of are sparked by any of this? Yeah?
The, moving at this, the needs for question one.
Mm-hmm.
I would put transportation and meals. I know that mobility is a big issue, and silver meals, which is major, those would be my top two. The threat that concern me is funding, obviously. Well, I don't know what we can do about that.
(laughing).
Not sure if that's something we can do, but, yeah, obviously, funding and, like the others, the very first thing I had noted was the outreach, and I dotted down some ideas, and this is what you do, so I apologize if you.
No, 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 I'm here to listen.
You've probably thought of all of these, not trying to insult anybody's intelligence, but I wrote down, like, medical offices, when Beth mentioned, you know, having the resources available, if you haven't already done that. And in terms of, you know, trusts and stuff, law practices, if they deal with trusts and wills, and I'm sure the hospital social worker probably has info, and human services, which I know you're familiar with. In Island County, one of our behavioral outreach people kind of specializes in seniors.
Right, right.
So, if someone comes in looking for resources, then, and you probably have all those cases covered, but.
Well, you know, there's always one more or another.
Right.
And this packet that I just gave you is a relatively new method that we're using to get word out, rather than people selecting from a whole set of brochures, providing the whole set, and then people can sort of select as they go. So, I think those are great ideas. Thank you.
And, you know, Erica had a great point. I was trying to think of people in places that would interact with seniors on a regular basis, but I think community-wide outreach is also, I mean, that's key, so that we can all do our part and share this information and maybe do a push to let everybody know that you're there, so that we can, we can help plug the programs.
Great. Any other needs? I've got one other question that I want to make sure I get in here before we, I know I'm trying to be sensitive to your time. I know you've got a lot on your agenda. Any other needs that anybody wants to speak to? So, one of the things that I think we're looking at, I don't want to just skip over resources and that, but looking at opportunities, I think if we, if our organization, our board considers a strategic plan in the next three years, one of the issues that we're going to be looking at is where do we target our resources, and how do we do that in a way that is most effective and has the greatest impact? And in looking at it from that perspective, are there opportunities here on the north end and in Oak Harbor that you would see, and some of them you've sort of named in terms of partnerships with different organizations and so forth, and getting outreach done? Is there anything else? I mean, we certainly work with Liz a lot. I met with Liz last week, as a matter of fact, but are there other opportunities that we maybe have not surfaced so far in what we do that we need to be considering? Yeah?
Do you coordinate with Island Transit?
We do, as a matter of fact. They were one of the groups that we had a rather long conversation with.
Because there's a new program in there for special transportation, not just paratransit, but additional transportation systems available.
We just got one of the vans.
Oh, you did?
We did, actually, and in part, and honestly, one of the big reasons why we got one of those vans is because of your people up here, to be able to go to our Time Together Adult Day Program, because they might otherwise not be able to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I sort of imagine we might have to expand that at some point, just because of the need there. But, thank you. Yes?
Something that I know, I've thought about, just in watching my family and, you know, go through this with, again, other family members and friends and trying to be helpful, is, and I don't know what you're doing currently, but I know that it can be very confusing about financial planning for retirement, social security, Medicare, Medicaid, I mean, it goes on and on, estates, wills, trusts. I mean, no matter where you are on the spectrum, you know, of income, I'm watching, you know, some of my older family members try and navigate all of those things, and me trying to be as helpful as I can, I think that maybe, you know, as our population is aging and getting to that age, that some targeted education, you know, maybe working with lawyers or, you know, people in town, just to get a simplified or, you know, a resource of this is how we can help, or what you can do to help get answers. Well, like I said, a lot of people just don't have anyone to.
Absolutely.
Maybe anyone to help them navigate all of that.
Right.
That system, the financial side and insurance side and retirement side, for sure.
So, just to, the one part that we are really specialized in and have been involved in with that is our State Health Insurance Benefits Advisors Program, which we run out of the Oak Harbor Senior Center, as well as the rest of Island County, I mean, of Whidby Island. And they're very active right now in making appointments with people who are trying to make decisions about supplemental insurance and get on Medicare and Medicaid, or not so much Medicaid, but Medicare. So, that's available now for making and ongoing during the year. We have these highly trained volunteers. I don't, I can't believe how much time they put in, but they're here every week to provide that, yeah. But, the law part of it, I think, is another. We do some of that with Lunch and Learns and some other kinds of things, but there might be something more substantial that could be done there. Thank you.
Just one comment. So, you're, I know you're familiar with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and my wife has taken it upon herself to actually adopt three seniors now in our community, that she's, you know, one of them has a pet, a cat, that needs to go to the vet, and she doesn't drive most of the time, or doesn't have access, so she's just able to do that for her. And there might be other.
Oh, absolutely.
Other people that would be willing to do something along that line, maybe, you know.
Adopt a senior program kind of thing?
There you go.
Yeah, we've done that around the holidays, but this expands that, and we certainly, you're echoing some things that we've heard in other places. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Yes?
I have one quick statistical question to ask you this week. Is the client served numbers, 2016, 17, 18, by your numbers, seem to be declining, even though the number for October, excuse me, yeah, October goes up to October 10th. That number, if you pro-rate two months, which is about 17%.
Which ones are you looking at there, Rick?
I'm looking at.
Are you looking at?
Service model.
Your service model, yes, on the left-hand side.
On the aging, right there, yeah.
Service model and center there. The client served is dropping down, and when you extrapolate even for remaining two months.
It's actually three, because it went through the end of September.
Yeah, I see your footnote here on that. So, if I add, which is approximately 17% onto that, 1732, you still come up close to 500 clients served short of the previous years.
So, let me explain.
What is, what's?
Let me explain one of the things that went on, has gone on this year with that, that has contributed to this. Our, some of you may have known Monique Olvera, who was at the Senior Center for several years in the position of Adult and Aging Resource Specialist. She left us, we don't pay as well as the state does, at the end of July, and we've had some drop during that time as we were trying to replace that. So, you're going to see some of that going on there, of the ramp-up of somebody brand-new, getting trained, and that kind of position has to go through a whole lot of training with the state because of our access to different state programs. So, you're just getting that person, Cindy is her name, back up to Stee. So, I don't, I think you're seeing that blip more as a result of a staffing change.
And I noticed that the contacts, the contacts, other than 2017, the contacts dropped by quite a few.
Yeah, and I.
But consistent with 2016. I'm just looking at the little spikes in this thing.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about that, and we also had a long-term person leave us and retire on Humano, so these are total stats. It happened at the same time. So.
Okay.
I think when you, when we're reporting back to you next year, you'll see this going right back up again. Certainly, on, we don't seem to have any lack of contact. It's more of staffing issue.
Do you, do you have an uptick in this number served when you get near Thanksgiving and Christmas? Do you know?
You know, somewhat, yes. I don't think it's as dramatic, and as somebody who's been in human services for 45 years, it's not as dramatic as it sometimes is with family and youth services, or some other kinds of things. You know, it's, we see a pretty consistent kind of thing all year long.
Pretty level.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I could add, although I'm not sitting in your chair with the microphone, just to add on your service model, where the service model is, is the number of people. When you all are talking about the outreach that we need to be doing, those are some of the things that we're looking to do to increase those numbers. So, you know, next year when we talk to you, we could be going, holy cow, and because.
Be careful what you're asking for.
Yeah, because we've actually been able to get more outreach. So, when we look at the numbers next year, hopefully, that obviously everybody's talked about wanting to assist them, you know, that will have helped us with those numbers too.
And Liz and I spent some time talking about this very thing last week, yeah.
Thank you.
Glad to provide you the end-of-year stats, too. You'll see it evening out.
We'll look at that, match it up with the budget.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much for allowing for this time to talk with you. We will be reporting back to you about what we are planning in the first quarter of next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, our next agenda item is Development Services. I see our Senior Planner, Cat Camac, coming to the table.
Good afternoon. So, I have some handouts, and as I was printing copies of the handouts, I realized that it was missing a sheet, so I printed that separately, so please.
Does this go behind or in front of?
In front is perfect.
Okay, thank you.
So, as the handouts are coming around the table, just to briefly introduce the topic, Capital Improvements Plan for the next six years, 2019 to 2024. Briefly discussed this at the council workshop last month, provided some handout, a draft handout, of some of the projects that are tracking. And at the last workshop, when I discussed this, we had some green squares for the schedule, didn't have the numbers. So, this one just is a more detailed version of that, has some numbers. And I want to say this is draft. Numbers are still coming in from various sources, and we're still changing those. But from a project list standpoint, I think these are some of the projects that are tracking for the next six years. So, what's really important here is the 2019-2020 timeframe, which is, will be in sync with the budget that the council is considering for this year. And if things line up, we'll have these numbers aligned with the budget numbers, and so, the Capital Improvements Plan is an implementation plan, so it will hopefully lead to implementation of these projects. The first two years, again, implemented by the budget, and then the subsequent four years will be considered by subsequent budgets. So, currently, the Planning Commission is looking at the Capital Improvements Plan. We're going through the process of adopting it, and with the Planning Commission opening a public hearing yesterday, they kind of just had a first look at it. They've continued their hearing to the November meeting, at which point they'll make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will take a look at it in the second meeting in December. So, we're trying to get you this information ahead of time so that you can start looking at it. Again, this is just a draft. I'm hoping that we'll finalize the numbers through the budget process, and so as Finance Department works with you guys to finalize the projects, the schedule, and the numbers, we'll reflect that in the final adopted CIP, so there shouldn't be any surprises. So, I know I just handed these to you today. Take a look at them. If you have any questions on any of them, if you see anything right now, we can talk about it right now, but if you do have questions later on, feel free to contact me. We can also schedule this for the November workshop. If you have more discussion, we'll kind of watch the budget process. If you're having questions and clarifications you need, we can come back to you at the November workshop to discuss this further. But just wanted to get this project list in your hands so that you can start looking at it. I don't have more than that to. I don't have more than that to chat right now, but if you want to take a few minutes to just look at it and if you have any questions, let me know. Yes.
Under the Waterfront Trail, the Veterans Park, we've had funds for that. We're not in danger of losing the funds that we were able to get. It just seems like it's taking so long. I mean, the marker's been there and we were approved.
Kathy's staff has been coordinating with DOT on that, highways and local programs and things. That's where the grant came from. And so we're actively working that project and as far as I know, DOT is happy with us.
Okay, I just, it just, okay.
Yeah, it has taken, it has taken a while, but we are on track with Department of Transportation, which is the funding source.
Thank you very much. Perfect.
Anyone else?
All right. Well, feel free to contact me if you have any questions on, on the projects. If not, we'll see you back in November.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, you want to take these?
Okay, we will then move on to Washington State Long Range Planning Project.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This item really is just intended to bring the council up to speed on some projects which are taking place at the state level that I think you might be interested in and they also seem to be timely, given some of the conversations which are taking place in our community and, and on the island. And so there are really three projects that I wanted to bring to your attention. As you saw in your summary report, we also provided the links for you to the different websites at Department of Commerce that has lots and lots of information. So I didn't try to print all of that out for you. I do have one handout that I'll just, or pass out in just a moment. What am I doing wrong here, Tim? Oh, it's not on. There we go. So the first project is something called Roadmap to Washington's Future. You might have heard of this project. In essence, what it is, is a, is a project, as you can see, that has two main goals. And by the way, all three of these were initiated in some capacity by the legislature over the last handful of years. So that's the genesis of each of these three projects. Is the legislature saying to Department of Commerce, we want you to look at these things in greater detail. So the, the goals for the Roadmap to Washington's Future really are to articulate the vision for our state's future and then to examine the planning framework, I think GMA, that's necessary to achieve that particular future. So on one hand, I think what you can really say is, is now that the Growth Management Act is about 25 years old, actually a little older than that now, more or less, the legislature as well as planning professionals across the state thought this is a good time to evaluate GMA, to see how it's doing in terms of helping the state reach its goals for the type of communities we want to live in. And so that's what this project is all about, is, is trying to figure out what those, how to meet those two goals. You can see that it started with the legislature in 2015, 2016, 2017, there was some money dedicated to what they were calling a pre-assessment study. That was really looking at how to design the project and beginning to get it off the ground. During portions of 2018, they were in the information gathering stage. They is the Ruckelhaus Center, which works with UW and, and I think also WSU, doing these kinds of giant outreach and study efforts. So it's not a, a particular interest group. It's a, it's a neutral think tank, if you will, that's out there doing this work on behalf of the Department of Commerce and the legislature. And they were holding a series of meetings across the state. I had the opportunity to participate in one of them down in Coopville and they were replicating that meeting all over the state. I think they're still actually in that process, although they're almost done. The schedule would have them preparing a report early next year and then having it done by June of 2019 so that it can be presented back to the legislature. What might some logical outcomes of this be? Well, I think we could see some redefining of the vision for the state as broad up from the grassroots level. I think that potentially you could see various pieces of legislation that might be proposed for changes to GMA. Do I think it means that GMA is going to go away? No, I don't, I don't think that that's a realistic expectation on anybody's part. But potentially you see good ideas coming from the people across the state, the practitioners, the public, elected officials, builders, everybody who has a hand in making communities communities, offering up ideas as, as to how we could have a better regulatory and planning framework. And then potentially, as you know, those will make their ways towards one of the state-elected officials and potentially become a bill that would be considered by, by the full legislature. So that's what that project is about. One of, and I included, I think a handout in your packet, I don't remember for sure, but here's another one, which is giving you actually the most recent update on the project itself. And so take a moment to, to pass that around. Yes?
The CEO of AWC is now on their committee, the Ruckus House.
Great.
Part of the think tank. They decided they wanted to have someone connected with cities to, so he accepted that position.
Good, good. That's a, that's a good addition to the Ruckelhaus Center then.
And then in June at the convention, they had several workshops with people helping to collect this data and dividing them up into tables and had people fill out information and talk and come up, so.
And that's the kind of, that's the kind of approach that they've been using in other communities as well. A semi-interesting piece of information is that the gentleman that's heading this up for the Ruckelhaus Center is a man by the name of Joe Tovar. Joe has been a planning practitioner for years and years and years. In fact, was one of the original groups of people who helped put together the Growth Management Act as, as we understand it today. And so he's a, a great guy to lead this effort because he knew what they were trying to accomplish way back in 1990. And so he, he can bring a good historical perspective to it as well as a forward-looking perspective. So the second one I want to bring to your attention is, is an effort being led by the Department of Commerce directly and then their, their consultants, who are known as the Makers. And this one is the Guidebook on Military and Community Compatibility. And as you can see, the purpose on the screen there is, is really to develop technical resources that would support local compatibility efforts. And, and an important point of this is compatibility flows both ways here. It's not just how the community can make itself compatible with whatever military installation they might have. It's, you know, what steps could the military do to enhance their compatibility with their surrounding communities? Again, back to GMA, there's actually provisions in GMA went into a few years ago, maybe five or six years ago, that really say we're supposed to prevent incompatible growth near installations. Pretty common sense thing. Oak Harbor and Island County have been doing that for well over two decades, but not all places across the state have been doing that. And so we saw these, this language being put in GMA again about half a dozen years ago. An important point about this project, it is not intended to address any specific concern around any specific installation. So if there is a, a major traffic issue that always takes place around a particular military installation, this project is not intended to help the community figure out how to solve that. What this is intended to do is to create a guidebook that would provide tools to elected officials, local practitioners, community liaison, community planning liaisons who work at these installations, things that we can do, that we can help use to solve a particular problem. But this project will not solve any particular problem. Your staff is, is serving both on the project advisory committee and the technical focus group. So I'm on the advisory committee, helping to guide the effort across the state. And I've enlisted CAC and Dennis to be part of the task force. So we had a meeting in Coopville a couple of weeks ago where they were able to provide very specific input to this particular project. This project also has community workshops that are taking place and there will be one here in Oak Harbor on November 14th. We'll make sure that you have the particulars as to the location and the time when, when we actually have that pinned down from the state. We know that, and they know that's the same date that the Washington Transportation Commission's going to be there, or be here, they will actually be here. And this meeting will be someplace else. And there will be, I, I understand that there's a gap enough in there so that if you feel like going to an all-day meeting followed by a nice hour and a half or two-hour evening meeting, you'll have that opportunity.
All day, all night, gosh.
Pardon me?
All day followed by all night.
Yeah. And there's a little bit of a schedule on the right-hand side there for you on the screen. This one's moving at a pretty good clip by design, by, by Commerce. If we link about it, it really got started around July of this year, I think, and it has to be done by June of next year. So it sounds strangely like their fiscal year that they need to complete this particular project. So things got underway in earnest, I would say in August. There was a pretty big push to get some things done by December. January through March, the draft will be put together and put out for public comment and then it'll be finalized by June of next year. Again, it'll be a tool that we'll have to help us address some of these issues. Any questions about that one that I can, I can help with?
Staff is part of this advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay. And the staff has also expressed some concern, actually more than just some concern, about how, what we're going to get into shortly too, about the, the draft for the Phase Two NPDS, which is, doesn't allow us to be in compliance with GMA. There seems to be a conflict between compliance with GMA and housing issues relative to the NPDS permit as it's being voted on. What is, what are you guys doing or going to do about influencing that issue in this roadmap discussion?
Oh, so we're back to the, to the roadmap one. I don't know that, that that's a topic that will be taken up specifically in the roadmap project and, and we've been participants in that, but we're not part of those committees. The committees that we're part of are the ones for the Military and Community Guidebook, Compatibility Guidebook. I think one of the things that would be likely to be seen out of the Roadmap to Washington's Future is broad conversation about how does the state meet its environmental goals while at the same time meeting some of its other goals. So GMA has 13 goals in it and at any given time, two or more of them are in conflict with each other. It just depends on the subject matter and the topic that we're talking about. So taking that as an example, without going too far afield here, one of the goals is to protect the environment and specifically to protect the quality of water in our state. Yet simultaneously, we have a housing goal, which tells us to provide a range of housing units for a range of individuals. On the surface, they may seem to be in conflict with each other, but the devil is going to be in the details in terms of how do you make that work? I would expect that that kind of fine tuning would potentially be a byproduct of the Roadmap to Washington's Future project. The Military Community Guidebook project won't come anywhere near those particular topics.
Okay. So you guys won't be involved in anything but the ones related to military communities?
Well, we will continue to be active in the project when it comes time to review a draft or to participate in a meeting, but we're not in a role where we have a role in guiding the project. Our role on the project advisory committee, or my role rather, is, is to help the consultants in the Department of Commerce make their project as successful as possible. And so that group is comprised of people like me, people who are working for the military and certain community members. That's, that's that advisory group.
So who would have the influence then relative to getting down into, you say the devil is in the details of bringing those conflicting parts together? What group is going to carry the most weight in bringing those parts together?
Really difficult to, to give you an answer to that, Mr. Omburg. I mean, it, I think the one thing that we have to see probably first off is, is what is the actual result of the, of the roadmap project? You know, what's the written document that's produced? What are the conclusions which might be reached? Are there recommendations or, or new visions articulated? So, you know, we, I think we're going to have to see what that end product is to understand what those major next steps would be. And then I think like any major legislation, there is no one main group. It's going to be a, a whole host of stakeholder groups that would have to be part of a, a conversation that talks about that integration. And it likely is going to take place through some proposed legislation. You know, somebody's going to say, we think we ought to do this. And that's what's going to bring the different interest groups to the table to negotiate that process. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to comment that actually Mayor Severance and myself were, did attend the elected official workshop and met with Joe and Amanda. We were there along with one county commissioner and a couple of, I think Coopville mayor and somebody from Langley. So it was just a think tank session. We, we came up with a whole lot of ideas, some of them as simple as, you know, the, the restrictions in the county to the five acre minimums and then, but certainly the, the overwhelming one that I think the Ruckelhaus folks at least left with was the conflict amongst government agencies with the Growth Management Plan as it, as it exists. And, and, and that was something that came up. In fact, several subjects just kind of led back to that, you know, and, and so it seemed like they were taking very good notes. A lot of the stuff that we had brought up and had been brought up prior, we had met with them in the spring. So they didn't have a ton of meetings under their belt, but I think they were starting to hear some of the same things repeated. And it sounded like what's going on is this is going to go back to the legislator, the legislature who requested this study. And, and hopefully the legislature listens to the folks that they asked to complete the study and we'll see where it goes. But certainly, I will say that the meeting I felt was productive. I felt as though we had a, a audience and some folks, and certainly Joe certainly understood what we were talking about and all the staff there from, from the university that was there understood what we were talking about and it, I, you know, we'll see if it was fruitful, but certainly felt as though it was a constructive meeting.
So before I move on to the third project, maybe I'll just touch on this concept of conflict for just a moment with GMA because that's nothing new. And in part, the simplest way to think about it is in terms of chronology. So long before there was GMA, the state adopted the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA. Here is talking about that. And that's, that was environmental, that's environmental review intended to, to address impacts from, from projects long before we had, we had the idea of growth management planning. At about the same time, the Shoreline Management Act was adopted. So then you roll forward and in 1990, GMA gets adopted and so the state is busily implementing that and counties and cities are doing that. And somebody says, well, wait a minute, how are we going to do this new stuff in light of this old stuff? Because these things don't actually work all that well. Well, later on, then there was legislation that said, we're required to figure out how to make our SEPA stuff work with our GMA stuff. So we've got to have those things integrated. And so then everybody figured out how to integrate them in your codes, how to make the processes run concurrently rather than as, as separate things. Same thing happened with the Shoreline Management Act. It has, it created its own set of rules and regulations along the shoreline. GMA comes along and says, we're going to do you one better and have some different sets of rules and regulations for the entire community. But when those two things coincided in the same physical space, we had some conflicts. Well, some of those had to be resolved through the court system. And eventually you get better guidance, new regulations, and now we know how to integrate shoreline stuff with GMA stuff. So it's very possible, Mr. Omburg, that as this continues to bubble along with the Phase Two permit, that we find ourselves in that same kind of path collectively where the conflict becomes at such a point where somebody says, we got to figure out how to, how to stop this conflict and make them work together. I don't think we're there yet, but I think I can see that on the horizon as, as being a logical outcome. And this might give you the starting point for that. Last thing I wanted to mention to you, then, then I'll get out of the way, so to speak, is the Buildable Lands Guidelines, which is also a project driven by the legislature and being administered by the Department of Commerce. Its purpose is to develop new guidelines that help counties and cities, but mostly counties, do their buildable lands report. Under GMA, there are certain counties that must prepare a buildable lands report. Island County is not one of them. It's, as you saw in my agenda bill, it's, it's the big counties, it's the big boys, it's King County, it's Pierce, it's Snohomish, et cetera. They have an obligation under GMA to provide a buildable lands report. They have an obligation under GMA to provide a buildable lands report on a periodic basis. That doesn't have a lot of relevance to us, but what does have relevance to us is that this effort is going to help provide new guidance on buildable lands capacity analysis methodology. And council members remember that we worked really hard with the county to determine an appropriate methodology when we did the countywide planning policies a handful of years ago. We also know that we've had some public comment about whether or not that methodology is as accurate as it could be. And so I think there's some sense out there that we should probably take a look at that again, but I think one of the things that the county and city staff were suggesting is the best way to do that is after this guidance is out and available, because now we'll have what is the best state of the practice, if you will. And that'll give us a chance to take a look and see what were the best practices across the state, what are the ones that Commerce is recommending that you use when you do these kinds of projects. And if you can agree on the methodology, and you can agree on the model, if you will, then, then the answer is the answer, right? But if you don't agree on the methodology, then you can't agree on the answer either. You've got to get, you've got to get the model down first, because then it truly is a mathematical function. So this is going to be super important to us at a point in our future, and we'll keep you posted on this project as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item, Police Department, discussion of jail options.
Mayor, council members? Did somebody, I think we had somebody leave. Do you want me to leave, or where are we at? Good?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm here today to talk with you about strategic planning and allocation of resources for the Police Department, and kind of summarize on a little bit of it, and then specifically talking about options for the jail moving forward. We've communicated with everybody in some aspect over the last many months, and I don't know that there's any major changes based on other conversations that I've had, but I want to go through the documents. So initially, I sent in a packet, there was five-page documents sent out, which I think everybody got received, and hopefully was able to go through. Rather than going through all of that now, am I just running through it? I'm going to skip through that a little bit, and then we'll come back to it to answer any questions that it may have generated for you. But I want you, if you would go back to what's listed as Document Two in your packet there on the handout, because there's some attachments that I wasn't able to send out ahead of time, but I want to go through those in the packet that's here. So Document Two, if you look at that, I think most of you have seen this document in some form. So basically, as part of the Police Department, when I was hired two years ago, I look at all aspects of the department, try to determine where we're at, strategic planning for the future, try to determine what we can do better, what should change, shouldn't change, working with staff. As part of that, of course, we've looked at several things, including the School Resource Officer, which we've all visited here together, and the school's doing a contribution for some of that. We've looked at the animal control process, and of course, we talked about that the last session, and everybody's familiar with that. You know, there's a lot of other aspects that I look at. One of them is I look at our fleet, look at our current structure, and where we're going, our staffing levels, and what we want, what we should have, what I believe we should be looking at in the future. And then, of course, the city jail is something that, from the moment that I was hired, basically, is something that we've been looking at as to where it's at, and what we should potentially do in the future, what options we should take. So if you look at Document Number Two, specifically talking about the jail, I've narrowed it down to what I believe to be three options moving forward. One option is to maintain the jail at its current operating structure, more or less, making improvements that we can, as we can, and with what we have. If you look at the middle column there, again, we have certain things that we are weak in with the jail. Our jail was built, I believe somebody said 1959, or something similar to that. We've been running it for a long time. The jail in 1997, we used to have a dispatch here in Oak Harbor, it was before my time, but dispatch went away to a regional dispatch center. When that went away, the jail, as far as the capacity, what it would hold, can you bring up the PowerPoint? I don't remember if I have that on the first one or not. Okay, so this is, I'm sorry, this is the document we're looking at currently. So the middle one there, which I might call Option Number Two, is maintaining our jail. There's some of the things to consider in moving forward with our jail currently the way it is. Our current jail, we operate about half the time with one jail staff, which creates some potential issues based on our housing inmates. If something happens, they're calling in somebody else to come and stand by with them while they open a jail cell, because we don't open a cell by ourselves. There's a lot of other details on that. I think most of you have seen this document before. But basically, the budget at the top there is about what we'd be looking at for 2019, and I don't know if that's exact. That was before Patricia was able to do some stuff, but I think it's about accurate. Another option is to, if we added three staff and moved forward with our jail, that would help us provide, no longer have single correction officer coverage, so that would decrease some liability concerns that I have regarding the jail. We'd still be limited by some of our structure and some of the other things that we have, compliance requirements and stuff like that, which for a structure our size and the city our size can be taxing. And adding three additional staff, which would be the bare minimum to try to provide that coverage, would put us up in budget to about $1.1 million or so. Option number three is looking at a contract and contracting out jail services. They looked at this in 1997. Council actually looked at this in 1997, and a decision was made to stay with a city jail. They then, we had one or two jail staff on duty at that time, because they were only holding like up to four, and I think, I think, I can't find documents, but I think dispatch was helping out with some of them, monitoring, I think. I don't find documents on that. In 1997, when they decided to keep the jail and move it to a larger, hold more prisoners or more inmates up to 12, then they hired additional staff. So then we got up to seven jail staff at that point in time. And so we moved from one or two jail staff in 97 to seven, and that's what we've been operating at as we go forward. Yes?
And just a quick question. You noted here, if I'm reading this correctly, the jail was a four-bed facility. When it switched to a 12-bed facility, you didn't add any space?
Not, I cannot find anything that indicates we added space, so I think they did not utilize some of the space at that point in time. The facility is pretty solid. I don't, I don't find anything that shows that there was any addition of space. I just don't think they were utilizing all the cells. And then they made the decision to do that. Now, whether or not they were holding more than four or anything like that, I mean, I just don't have that data, but I do know it was considered a four-bed facility at that time. So the facility itself, to my knowledge, has not changed. So that's, so the option number three, and if you go through that, and again, I think most of you have seen that or gone through that with me in some form, is an option to contract out. Now, we have the potential to contract out with whomever we want to contract out for. It makes sense for us to look at Island County, if that's something that would work for everybody, and if that's the route we wanted to go with in contracting out jail services. There are pluses and minuses, which are listed on this. You know, one of the delicate things, or one of the things that have been forefront in my mind for the last two years while I've been looking at this, and the last many months that I've been looking at it more in depth, at least in some form, of course, is staff. You know, I have seven correction officer staffs right now, and obviously, they're part of, part of our organization, so, you know, how does that affect them? In addition to that, if we, if we were to contract out the jail. In addition to that, the Oak Harbor Police Department, for many, 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 many years, has ran with the city jail. So, you know, it would be a change if we contract out from what they've been used to. So that would require some modification to processes and things and stuff like that. And then, of course, we have a distance, which would be, I'm not going to get into the time, it's driving distance to Coopville, and whatever booking process we have there, and then driving distance back, which would be similar to what our animal control kind of process is, based on whatever our intake amount would be. And of course, with that, as I've discussed, and I think is, maybe it's not referred to up there, I would be looking at probably two police support officers to take over tasks, if we were to contract, to take over tasks that jail staff currently does, that I would still have, like fingerprinting concealed weapon permit people, and transporting prisoners or inmates from here to Island County, and different tasks like that. So there are some benefits that you have with that. We no longer maintain a facility. We are able to take advantage of all of the opportunities that inmates have over there if they implement work release, that kind of stuff, the educational opportunities they may have in a facility, there's a better continuity of care process with Island County, and then with that facility, we'd be in that partnership through the contract means with Island County based on that. So if you flip over to Document Three, another document that you probably haven't seen before, and if you switch the slide there, please. So what I did, what I've done as part of this, in my research, I've gone back, and you'll see it up there, and it skips ahead. So 1998 is the first year we operated, Oak Harbor operated with the jail at a larger capacity. And then I've got the last, I don't know, eight or nine years in there. It's, it's given you an overall budget amount for the Police Department over this period of time, and then it's given you an overall amount for the jail budget, which was part of that Police Department budget. And then I broke it down there, jail percentage of the Oak Harbor Police Department budget. So in 1998, the percentage of the jail budget from the overall budget was 9.45%. You'll see that in 2018, we're at 13.97% of the overall Oak Harbor Police Department budget is dedicated to the jail. In 2019, if we stayed at our current, if we maintained Option Number Two, which is kind of staying where we're at, our jail budget would be about 14.16% of our anticipated budget in 2019, which still has yet to be approved, but as we look forward, I'm trying to do what I can do with that. If we contract out with Island County, and there's been a lot of work done in trying to determine whether that's feasible or not, and I've done a lot of work with the sheriff, with you folks, as far as trying to keep you informed, I've also met with our correctional staff, they're aware. We met with them a while back and let them know that we were going to be presenting and looking at options. We've tried to keep them up to date, and, and there's some proposed information, which we'll get to, on what a contract might look out with, look like with Island County if we get there. If what the proposal is, is an amount that were to be, if we considered contracting the jail, and if it were to be for the proposed amount in contract details, moving forward into 2019, if that amount were to be the case, based on that five-year contract that is proposed, our actual jail expenditure portion of our budget would go down to about 2.95% in 2019 of our overall budget. In 2020, it would go down to about 10.75%. Now, somebody may be asking why it goes down, and I can answer that question, I guess. And I want to be a little, I want to be a little careful about some numbers, because some are just what I'm trying to prep, and I want to be a little careful, because there's no contract in place with Island County, and there's nothing in place with anything like transport officers or anything like that, or police support officers. So some of those numbers are numbers that would have to be worked out in detail. But if we were to get a five-year contract with Island County at a set rate, like my proposal is, it's set for five years at a specific rate, okay? So obviously, as five years goes by, our budget within the department will probably increase 2% or whatever that percentage will be each year. Well, that, that five-year contract rate would not, based on, we built some overflow into that, so basically, each year, there'll be a little bit bigger separation, if you understand what I'm saying. Until the five-year mark, when everything goes back to having to be renegotiated. So that's that, and I'll pause after that to answer any questions if you have, once I finish these last two things. So the chart in the middle there, you see, is just giving you a visual representation of our, of our jail budget from 2013 to going into what would be anticipated in 2019. And the bottom graph, I probably shouldn't even have thrown in there, but I'll talk about it since I did. If departments contract, if cities contract with other agencies to, for jail spaces, which is very common, oftentimes, you'll work out a contract, like I'm proposing, if we do something with Island County, like we would do. As you work out that contract, that other agency will give you a specific amount, generally average daily bed rate, as part of that contract. So you'll say, "I want eight beds, and I want it at this lower, at this contract rate, guarantee me those eight beds, and I'll guarantee you I'll give you that amount of money." So it's not variable, they know what their income is and all that kind of stuff. If you don't do that, then they're going to fix it on a different rate, it's usually a higher rate, because they don't have that guaranteed income coming in, they're going to give you a higher rate. So something similar to like, let's say, score $108. If you don't have a contract rate, I think their rate is actually something like $150 or something like that per day, not on a contract rate. And some of that's our overflow rate, too. So that's some of the figures there. If you look at that, it gives you a barometer. Now, the Island, or the OHPD rate you see there at 67 is what we currently charge. We only have one agency that contracts with us in the past, they'd had a couple other agencies, that's many years ago. The only agency that contract us, contracts with us right now is Department of Corrections. And we have a current rate of $67, which is pretty low. If we were to take our budget and fill every jail space, every bed, and dividing that out, our rate would be $182, or that's what we basically, our budget comes down to, if we were to fill every bed every day, that's what, that's what that would cost us. Now, that's not a reasonable rate, that's just a figure up there. As you look at the Island County rate there, 136, they actually list, and I'll show you in a later document, that their average daily bed rate is $85. Now, that's in 2017, it's probably a little higher now. Basically, what you're seeing at 136, if we were to enter into this contract, if this decision is the route you folks want to take, instead of staying with our current jail, and we entered into it at what the proposal is, if you do the division, that's essentially what we're paying for an average daily bed rate, would be 136 based on that. Any questions on this before we move on? Yes, sir.
As much as we've talked about this, I, the DOC contract, there's no conflict with that, right?
No, I didn't.
The DOC contract that we currently have with this jail, there's no conflict if we go to...
There is no conflict. We've actually informed DOC, I think, a month ago or so, that we were looking at options with our jail, and basically said we have these kind of three options that we're kind of narrowed down to. They're aware of that. They also have a contract with Island County. They have contracts with pretty much every jail in the state as far as, as far as it goes. So there's no, there's no conflict, there's nothing that prohibits us. We would just tell them, you know, we no longer have a jail if that's the route we take, and they would do something different. Anything else?
Hello, Councilman Omburg.
Chief, I, you know, you look at this schedule that you have here, this chart, 2015, 2018, there's barely over 2% increase through that period of time. In fact, for 2015, 2017, it's nearly flat. What, how do you explain that?
You know, I can't without going in, and I didn't, and I looked at that as I come in here. What, I mean, there's so many dynamics that if I really dug deep, I could potentially try to find out why we're getting those figures. I don't know our contract years for working out contracts. I haven't gone back to look. I know we just did a contract in 2017 for 2018, 19, so 2015 might have been a year when we did a contract difference. You know, whether it's price of food, whether staffing went down, whether they conserved the money at that period of time, I just don't have that. The operational status hasn't really changed. So unless it's a contract rate difference, or we needed to, I know they installed cameras one year, so whether there's additional allocation for monies, I don't have the details for you.
Well, the reason I ask that question is, we have, we have roughly 2-plus percent, almost 3% increase for the budget for uniform officers. And so if, if we're going up, and that's, that's just labor. In addition to that, we have other expenses. So how could we go flat for three years and only have an average of 2% from one end of that spectrum to the other? There's only 2% difference.
So, you probably know this, but just make sure we're clear on this. So commissioned police officers like myself are at a different contract, a different rate, and I don't know historically if that's, if the salary negotiations is...
So how could we go flat for three years and only have an average of 2% from one end of that spectrum to the other? There's only 2% difference.
So, you probably know this, but just make sure we're clear on this. So commissioned police officers like myself are at a different contract, a different rate, and I don't know historically if that's, if the salary negotiations, negotiations have been consistent between non-commission, which is what jail staff would fall into. So their base rate would be different, potentially than commissioned. So I don't know the answer to that and without digging deeper, I can't, I can't...
Sorry.
That's okay.
I threw it together.
See, he's got...
Yeah, one of my guesses, maybe a change in allocation of costs could have been, could have happened too, but like the chief said, we didn't have to delve into the numbers to really get...
So I've got...
I, I trust what you're presenting to us. I question what is presented to us when I see somewhat of an anomaly here of such a very slight increase when I know that there have been increase as a result of inflation and negotiations and stuff like that for contracts.
Yeah, so what I did is I went back to the budget sheets and I pulled the stat out of the budget sheets. What I did not do is drill down to find out why there's, why there's a flat line there basically, because you see a flat line for a three-year period. And I did not drill down to see what that flat line is. I mean, I certainly could, you know, I know you have an allocated budget, then you have an actual expenditure in a budget, so whether there's a difference in how that ended up or not, I don't know. I don't, I think there's a, I think 2015, 2016 was a budget or a negotiations year, I'm not sure. I didn't drill down into that either. So the data, as far as the, and I think this is allocated money, so the data is, is there, I just can't tell you what it's exactly for. I can make guesses, but it's just guesses.
Shouldn't we know that though, as we're going through our budget period? Shouldn't we know why there is a flat line in this thing?
One thing I wanted to say, it's really, it's two years, not three. Isn't it, I mean, we've got a pretty substantial increase from 2014 to 2015 and then it flatlines from 2015 through 16 to 17.
Yeah, it's two years in there, and then I average it out though, when you go up through 18 budget, it comes out about 2%, 2.2%.
And your percentage is going to change because you've got to look at the overall police budget and the jail budget and see what the difference is. As far as the bottom percentage number goes, it doesn't change the actual jail bud, portion of the budget, but the percentage is going to change. Like our jail, if our police budget goes up dramatically and the jail doesn't go up as much, then your percentage difference is going to be a lot different than what it was the year before on the percentages. But it doesn't change that actual amount, and Patricia may have input on that.
If we're looking just at budget, it'd be better to compare actuals. I don't know if these are actuals or just budgets. Did you pull it from the budget or from the actuals?
I pulled it from, I believe, the allocated, the numbers that are allocated at the beginning of the year for that.
Okay, so just the budget and numbers. So the actuals will be demonstrated in a different way usually. Budget is what we have our best guess, so I think he was trying to get a like across the way for what they anticipated spending. Actuals will give you more of what really happened.
And I tried to keep it actual, just to let you know, because 765 for this year is, or I'm sorry, allocated, because 765 for this year is my allocated. I don't have my actuals yet. 800 for next year is my, and it's something like that, again, I had to do this before to get final numbers, is my allocated, I don't know what my actual's going to be. So I try to keep it a standard, that's why I believe these numbers are all actual, or allocated.
Yeah, they're all budget versus actual.
Yeah, now that even confused me more, because we're looking at history here where 15, 16, and 17, we should have actuals.
But I'm not sure that's how he presents it because...
I took, I took a standard, I took the allocated from, I believe, from all those years.
So, when the city administrator said it, this anomaly may reflect transfers also. Are you talking about transfers from budget to a different part of the police budget? Going from jail to something else?
No. I'll speak for him, I'm just kind of guessing here. I guess probably we wouldn't, probably shouldn't theorize and just, we can drill down, we have the data.
I need actuals.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it alone for right now. It just seems strange that we're being presented something that reflects something that seems impossible to me.
Yeah, I mean, and there may, it may be off by a little bit here or there, but those are either, those are, those are figures historically that I got from the documents from those periods of time, because obviously I wasn't here. So what I did is I pulled up the budget information that I had, I had available. I believe it's allocated money, not the end result of spent money. And I, and I believe I did that to maintain a standard instead of going back and forth to keep a standard going forward on that. And the same with the department budget, I believe is what I did unless I was asleep that day and put in actual for something. But I try to stay with a standard known amount, so we don't have to look at it secretly. But that's an allocated, so there's, it's, it's the same across the board, is what I try to do. And, and again, the percentages are there, you know, and again, if you look at 2019, I didn't have the exact figures moving forward, this is what I anticipate. I think the allocated for the department budget I got from Patricia, I think at the time that was accurate, whether that's still accurate or not, I don't know. And of course, that's not to be passed yet, but I wanted to present you with some kind of anticipated figure for the future based on what I knew at the time that I developed this. And 2020 is the same way. I don't even have a jail budget in there because I couldn't even begin to look at that one, although I think we have a preliminary department budget moving forward based on our percentage increase for the department. So that's where we're at with that. So moving to document four. This is basically off of a, the internet, off of a WASPIC site, and I wanted to just give you an example of jails around the state, just so you have this. I've highlighted Oak Harbor there in yellow and I've highlighted Island County in yellow down below. And then Yakima County is highlighted on the next page and I highlight that for a reason, which I'll talk about here in a minute. Just gives you a barometer, if you look at design capacity, tells you what they say their bed, their bed space is. You look at average daily bed rate, again, I think this was 2017, it tells you what, what they're charging. I don't, I can't tell you if that's a contract rate or an open rate. And what they report is their average length of stay in days and then their average daily population. And our average daily population for 2017 is listed as seven. We've gone between five and seven, seven is about what our average daily population is. The Yakima County jail, the information is highlighted in yellow and for a specific reason, and it is because Yakima is right now in the stages of finishing up, I assume, completing a contract with Yakima County. Yakima County contracts with a lot of agencies. Yakima County would be an overflow or a backup location for Island County to have inmates housed if needed and depend upon what they're serving time-wise and all that. So there's a, there's a place there to put additional inmates if Island County does get to capacity for some reason. If you go to document number five, and I'm going to run down the blue on the left and I just tried to give a brief summary, and this is again, if, giving you an idea what a contract would look like if you decided that we wanted to go that route. And again, this is based on what a proposed contract might look like. If you look at item number one there, it's commitment to a five-year contract at $400,000 a year and it's, if that's the contract, then it, you know, it's consistent for a five-year period of time and would be a known details in the contract. We're looking at an eight-bed reservation so that we have an eight-bed space available to us. Also talking about a two-bed overflow, so that if we have people that are potentially in there for 15 days or less, we'd have an additional two beds that we could put them in on a temporary basis without having to go to an overflow cost. If we go in addition to that or over that, then we'd have to, we'd be looking at paying additional money if, if that, if that happens. Outside medical, inside medical, so in other words, if somebody's in their facility with Island County, and this would be the way with pretty much any jail, but if they're in the facility, they take advantage of, so if they cut their finger, do that kind of stuff that requires, that can be treated in-house. Island County has a contract with medical, it would be taken care of in-house as part of the services provided. If somebody were to have to be shipped outside of Island County to a hospital or to a clinic or something like that, then that's an additional cost. We would have a certain amount built into the contract that would take care of it. If it goes over that amount, then, then they would end up billing us. Be no different than us right now where if we have that, we, we have to take them somewhere and we pay that medical cost already. Even for smaller stuff, that's what we have to do. Management of the jail, if it was contracted out, we would no longer have a jail. Island County would if we contracted with them and they would manage the inmates and their facility. We don't manage their facility if that's the case. Transportation, we'd be responsible for transporting our inmates to Island County. And then once they're there and they need to go to something for some reason, Island County would treat them just like the other inmates. Staffing, again, we, I talked about, I'd be looking at a couple of police support officers and they would be taking care of, like our transportation and some of that stuff in addition to officers when necessary, and then other duties that we would have to pick up if we don't, no longer have a jail, that are currently performed by our correction staff. Island County, it's my understanding if we were to contract with them, they'd probably be looking at adding some staff. I don't know how many, one or two, I think, but that's up to them. We would not mandate that, that they run their facility if we do this. Felony offenders aren't really affected by this, they already go to county facilities. They're not even included, this is misdemeanor level of stuff. Court appearances, so we have a court over here, right now we're taking our inmates to the court for daily court appearances. Island County does it through video. If we contract with them and utilize their facility, then our, our people would have the same, they would also be able to utilize the video for their arraignments and different court appearances. When it becomes required to take them to a specific location for court or something like that, a jury trial or something like that, then transportation would be arranged, whether it's through our people or through Island County, we'd take care, that'd be taken care of. If you order document number six, and can you flip to the next, go backwards? Just go backwards, the one you were just on. Just, just go back to... Oh, I do, alright. Does it turn off? I don't know, let me just say it. There we go, okay. If you go to document number six, which I do not have a slide of, this is the document that, again, I think some people have seen before. Basically this is an proposed, proposed information on what we might be looking at with Island County, and I've pretty much talked about it. What I'd be looking at is interested in doing an eight-bed reservation so that we can take care of what our average daily bed rate is and have that extra bed. And then a two-bed overflow for those short-term processes. And I'd be looking at, hopefully trying to stay with a five-year contract at the, as we near a five-year contract, then we'd be looking at Island County and talking about how it moves forward based on any inflators that might be present at that time as we were to approach at. And again, this would have to survive all the processes. If there's modification, then that could change something, but that's what the proposal is. Through my contacts so far, it seems like this, if this is decision that would be made, it would be Island County, it'd be beneficial for them too, so. But they would have to make their own decision based on all the information. So I do know that the commissioners are looking at this and, and that there's a discussion going on. So document number seven, let's hold off on that for a second and let me answer any questions that you may have specifically, because this goes into a little bit more about staffing and how we might look at that if, if we move forward. But let's pause for a second and let's talk about the jail. And you guys have had, all had an opportunity to read those first, that first document, five pages or whatever, I hope. And if we go back to that or if there's other questions you like specifically about, so what we're kind of looking at here is what direction do we want to take with the jail? Depending upon what direction we take with the jail, then I have, I'm looking at some potential staffing options. But the initial decision is, just like with animal control and school resource, officers, information that we have to deal with and these other factors that are in, out there, we look at those individually, try to make the best decisions we can. Now holistically, I'm also looking at my department, how I can best manage and move forward progressively with the department. But I think we're at a good point now to talk about the jail options, to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for working so hard on this, for our police department and our jail specifically. And, you know, at a high level thinking, I am, and like that Island County jail has more services, more staffing available, and that to me is a plus, it's a positive for the safety of the jailers, the jail staff, and the inmates. And I guess my question for you would be, what is your comfort level? What are your thoughts on, on the Island County jail? Luckily, I've never been inside or dealt with the staff there, so, and do you feel like, like that is a positive move, you know, for, for all involved on a, on a personal level with the jailers, the inmates, everyone?
I do feel comfortable with Island County jail. I've worked closely with Sheriff Brown and Chief Criminal Deputy Rick Felici and their jail director, Jose Breones. I believe they're all professional, I believe they're all collaborative and that they see a vision for the island, not just Island County, but the island. And, you know, I think even talking with you folks and I think talking with commissioners, I think everybody understands that how we get to certain locations is part of that is still stuff that we all get paid money for or volunteer to do. But I feel very comfortable with, with the staff that's in there, I feel very comfortable with the direction that that's going. If I didn't, I probably would have just said, if I looked at that and I didn't feel comfortable, I wouldn't, I'd be looking elsewhere. You know, there are potential other options for us that could become available and, and I'm going to be reaching out with Skagit County. However, Skagit County, last time I talked, wasn't really interested in doing additional contracts. They got a new facility, they've got a lot of stuff they're working out, so I don't know where, where we'd be at with, as a backup. I really truly believe that if we choose to go to a contract, that Island County is our, is our best source because they're here, they're on the island, we all have vested interests. I think them bringing in Jose Breones, from all the contacts and information and input and everything I've been to with Jose and talked about with Jose is, he's a professional, dedicated correction manager, director. And, and I think he's turned that jail around and wasn't here when things were, were different, but I think he's leading that jail in a progressive manner and I think he's given the proper resources, which I know they're working on, I think that jail will do nothing but improve. I know they're looking at, and I think it's been in the paper, that they're looking at some kind of comprehensive or some kind of plan for a five-year plan as far as facility goes. So I know they're looking at the different options. I do think if we have this partnership with them, if this is where we go, then if this contract amount goes in there, they're going to have the money coming in from, from our contract and managing the staff the way that they want, managing the facility, you know, talking to us about our partnership stuff. At five years, we'll be doing that again and I think as we look at long-term solutions, I think we're involved in that conversation in some capacity and they're going to be wanting us to be involved in that conversation. I know they're looking at jail options like diversion programs, potentially available work release, home monitoring, all that stuff that's, at one time, Oak Harbor had like some home monitoring or work release and it dropped a long time ago. And I, you know, I can't find historical records, I'm assuming there isn't time management and costs and some of that stuff. But you can make people pay for some of that stuff so you can recoup some of that. If we contract with them, we would have those options available to us also. So I feel comfortable with, with Jose and working with the Island County as I have. I think their facility is, is a good facility for what it is. I think space is, is an issue and always will be with jails and I think they're looking at options in a five-year plan to do that. In the meantime, I think the Yakima option is, is a good solution for, for temporary. It's not real responsive to your question, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns in this whole thing is, is staff, like I've talked about. And we've been working on how we can try to resolve some of that and what we can best do to take care of it if a contract is the way that we want to go.
Thank you. You and your staff have done an incredible amount of research and talking and, and all of this. I would also say, you're the leader, I mean, the buck stops here, but I would assume you have talked with your whole department. I mean, it helps if the department is also thinking, yeah, chief, this is a good idea... thinking, yeah, chief, this is a good idea. We think you are headed in the right direction too. We can see. So just, yes or no? Are they thinking this is pretty good?
So I have not specifically sought out input from every officer.
Okay, just a few.
Yeah, so, you know, of course, my command staff and there's been discussions with corrections. There's been discussion with supervisors, but I have not specifically taken a vote on this. I don't, you know, it's tough to do when you have staff that you're looking at in positions and all that kind of stuff. And it's tough to do, you know, there's a change that occurs if we contact, contract out. It's easy to stay status quo to a certain extent. It may be not the easy budget and liability and upkeep, but status quo is almost always the easier way to go. I think that's why we're just now visiting this instead of 10 years ago or five years ago or whatever. So, you know, I don't think it was probably good for me to be doing a poll on this. I did sit down, I had a meeting with the correction staff and I said, hey, here's, I'm at a point where I need to have this meeting with you and let you know that I'm going to be presenting options and taking a look at this. And I, you see their faces, you hear their comments. I think there's some correction staff that says, we knew it was coming, or, you know, our facility is such, but there's also some staff that say, boy, let's just do something to make this better. You know, two years ago, I had somebody approach me and said, hey, when are they going to build us a new jail? You know, so, and that's an option. And I didn't put that down on here as a fourth option, but we could build a new jail to come up to a lot of good standards and move towards the future. If we want to do that, then you've got to set that money aside to do that. And then we're responsible for doing that. Or do we put our resources into our county facility as part of our contract? So those options are all out there. You know, I think you'd get a spattering. You'd be, some people don't want to change what we've done. And you get some people say we should have done this a long time ago, some that say, you know, okay, we knew it was coming. Some would say, oh, it'll be okay to do this. You know, as we move on with, in my department, strategic planning and allocation of resources process, if we were to, if we were to move forward with a contract situation, I have a proposal in here about how I would do my staffing. I think we need to add a, you know, this is not done so that I can add police officers. I didn't start this study. The mayor directed me, make sure you're looking at your department when I first got hired. And so I've been doing that for all the time. But as I look at that and as I started looking at and evaluating this, we can make a decision on the jail in lieu of any other decision. We can. And we should be looking at that in that single fashion. Holistically, as I look at it, if a decision is made to do this, then I think we look at all other potential options, which includes staffing. And so if we can take care of what I conceive to be, or consider to be staffing problems, and how do we add staff, I have a solution for that if that option is chosen. I think that balances a little because people see us getting additional staff if that's the case. So I, difficult question, but that's where we're at.
Well, I think your plan also, the way you've laid it out, you've looked at the big picture, the vision for the future and not, let's not change things, or, I mean, I think you're truly trying to do what's best. I mean, we can all just look across the street and go, that is a really old building. I could say other things, but I won't. But it's a really old building and the maintenance is just not going to work and we just don't have the budget to start now just to be putting away. So I like the vision and looking at the region as a whole, how we can be cooperative and work together and what's going to be a win-win, I think for everybody, including the prisoners, keeping them safe. So, thank you.
And again, an advantage of keeping our jails, we control it. We can dictate who we put in and take out and what we do. But along with that responsibility comes our fiscal responsibility for everything, our liability, our keeping up with mandated mandates from the state and all that kind of stuff. So it's just where do we want to go moving forward? So the difficult thing is making a change. But, you know, I think we're, I think we need to look and then make that decision at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to withhold my overall comments on the plan until you're done, but I wanted to speak to Counselor Wassinger's question about Island County. And I just want to let you know that I agree 100% with the chief about Island County and Jose Breones and the things that he's done. If you haven't been down there and met him, I highly encourage that you do so.
In a good manner.
Right, right, yeah. Don't go out of your way to get the whole experience. Yes, exactly. Don't make him come get you. But in the last several years, there has been a real, a real culture shift there. And he is real progressive. He's really embraced that and the staff has really embraced that overall. I think that they've, they've really come up with a new way of doing things or a better way of doing things. Human Services has a dedicated outreach staff member that addresses mental and behavioral health issues. They have a really, they worked with that person to come up with a really detailed intake assessment. I mean, so that they knew exactly what that person needed or where they needed to go. It's actually really impressive. And I only see it getting better under Breones' leadership. So I would have no reservations about the facility in general.
Just to dovetail on that, you know, that's the importance of also working out a contract and working out the details to extend. And, you know, there's a lot of these contracts around the state, so there's some standard stuff in there. But, you know, also working out specifics like, you know, the amounts and that kind of stuff. And, you know, I've worked collaboratively since I've been here with Rick Felici and Mark Brown and Jose Breones. And I've found them to be very good partners and stuff and very concerned and very reachable, you know, at least from the time that I've spent with them. So, and I think commissioners through my conversations with them all see a vision too for the county and so hopefully it won't be an issue.
Mayor, Chief Dresker, so, not to take any wind out of your sails, because I know you're about to present to us a list of about 17 positives, I think, that could come out of this. You and I had met and discussed that there are a couple negatives. But I think out of our discussion, I left with the only negative I'm recollecting is maybe some loss of, you know, outside of the change and the ripple effect from the change, that was a loss of control. Can you kind of highlight that for us a bit?
Well, I guess I'll start that off by saying really the biggest, let's back to the down things, but there's more down things than this and the other one. My biggest concern, the biggest thing is, I don't know that I can retain all staff if we go to a contract. Now, I do know that Skagit County and Island County both want to hire staff. And so I'm sure that we could figure something out with that. So that's the biggest thing, just right off the bat. And that's been, you know, that's unfortunately is, we're in these positions, those are the things that weigh on you the most. But after that, yeah, you lose some control. So, for instance, if we have somebody we're going to book into jail, we make the decision if we're going to book them to jail or not. If we, if they have a medical, we make the decision. If we, if the person we believe is, I mean, we just, we make those decisions for our jail based on standards, based on rules, based on regulations, but it's us. If we want to put 12 in there, we'll put 12 in there. And our facility is such that we can do that without any really additional cost of it. If we contract out and we do an eight-bed reservation, if I put more than eight in there, then I'm going to probably pay money other than that two overflow situation for less than 15 days. So we'll have to manage that, but that's okay. That's part of, that's part of business. And if, as things change, we won't control Island County and what they do or don't do with their facility. We've already discussed that there'll be certain discussions if there are inmates that they'll have with us, which is going to happen. And at the end of five years, if this contract's in place, it's set to be negotiated again as to what moves forward with appropriate inflators. So at that point in time, we'll have to talk to them again and figure out where to go for another, hopefully, five-year contract or whatever it may be. So let's start on another negative. Let's say things go bad in a year or two or whatever, and we just don't like it. So either party has potentially 180-day withdrawal. So you can notify, I want out, I don't like this contract. I'm notifying you. And 180 days later, we're out of the contract or they're out of the contract. If that's the case, then where do we take our inmates laying on the table? So that's where I'd be looking at Skagit County or somebody and saying, hey, you know, I need to have an alternative if necessary. You know, I, there's a lot of contracts around the state. You know, I don't foresee that happening. There's a benefit for them and a benefit for us to make it happen otherwise. But the reality is, if we don't have our jail anymore, we're dependent on somebody else, right? We're dependent on ICOM right now for our regional services, although we're part of the board. You know, so there's that dependency. But there's also the mutual, it's also working out, you'll see in one of the documents you read, you know, it's a further thing of a good professional relationship. I mean, that's part of these types of things. You know, there's 17 city jails in the state, and I have that on one of the documents. Other than those 17 cities, which includes us, and most of those cities are larger ones that have their own city jail, like 98 or stuff like that, out of those, otherwise, those city jails contract with agencies that have jails. It's a very common process for that to occur. So that's the other thing. You're dependent on somebody else for that. And then the other thing is just transport, the transition going to and from Island County for the distance. If they were a block away, it wouldn't be quite so much. So those are some of the negatives or whatever you want to call it, considerations that you have to have.
Do you have an idea of how many days in a given period that we've exceeded the eight people in holding?
You know, I've been trying to, I've been actually trying to monitor the jail for quite a while, just looking. We're almost invariably under that. We have gotten up to 10 or so in certain days. But again, some of that is, is different processes. You book some people and it's because somebody's doing something right now, we go out and arrest them, we got to book them. So that person just gets booked, they're in there, okay? There's some people who are what's called commits. So the judge does a sentencing, says you're committed to 30 days in jail, I need you to contact the Oak Harbor jail and schedule your commit. So you work them in at a commit schedule and to facilitate what your jail is, so how you work that in. And we contract out with DOC. So typically, when I see more than seven or even more than five or something like that, you'll typically have two to four DOC people in there sitting in our facility. And so even the days where we might have those numbers, we wouldn't if we excluded DOC. And so when we're talking about contracting from Island County, we're not including the DOC people because they're not part of us at that point. So those numbers go down a bunch.
So one of our concerns should not be that we're going to be letting criminals loose on the street because we have no place to house them.
No, and that's not my philosophy. I mean, that's why I went with eight. I really think we're probably going to be utilizing five beds or something similar to that, four or five beds. I think that's based on what I've looked at. I think that's about the number we're going to be looking at. But I did not want to come in undercut. I mean, I do not, I've been in, you know, I've seen it and I know what it's like for some agencies when they can't book somebody because of a booking restriction. I do not want to be in that position. And that's why we have eight beds. That's why we have a two-bed overflow. And that's why if we go beyond that, we can still book based on whatever the criteria is and based on paying an amount. But we'll have to evaluate and make those decisions with some articulation to a certain degree. So no, I don't anticipate at all that being the issue, that we can't book people that need to be booked. Now, should we be looking at jail diversion options? Yeah, as appropriate and as we move forward with what's appropriate. But I don't see us getting into a position where somebody needs to be booked in jail and we can't do it. And to be honest with you, Island County's been real good with this so far. And we've had one local gentleman who's out of control on the street and we've had to put him in a couple of times. He's not appropriate for our facility because we can't handle what he does and doesn't do. And so we've called Island County up and says, hey, can you have this guy for us? And they've done that. And because their facility is better suited for that. And not charged us for it. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
First, I want to thank you for being willing to do things the hard way. Because the easy way would be to maintain the status quo. The easy way would just be to keep doing things the way they've been doing, the way they've been done. You said your priorities, your efficiencies and your resource needs are constantly being reviewed. And I believe that. And that's the hard way. The easy way is to just continue on. And I believe, yeah, we've got some more things to go through here, but I'm not going to ask you about the negatives because my fellow council member took that from me this time. But I want to highlight some of the positives that I'm seeing. In that, the biggest one is with Island County, they've got the staffing, they've got the training to adequately maintain a detention facility. Ours is the smallest in the state. You, as you've pointed out, it's tight space. It's not a good fit for problematic inmates. And we have a liability concern there. As I'm looking at what's printed here, we've got not only a safer situation for our officers, we lose a liability situation, but it is better for the inmates. We've got broader flexibility with court dates with options such as work release, home monitoring, things that we don't have, they have access to, the continuity of care. We are looking at an uptick in inmates who have mental health disorders where we have, where we don't have. But Island County has availability for mental health resources and medical, in-house medical. I'm not seeing a lot of reasons not to do this. And then at the end of this, we're saving money.
Yeah, and I want to make sure I clarify a couple of things on that and not counter that. So we do provide medical services. We take them out, but we don't have in-house. And we could provide a contract where we contract to someone like Island County does if we want to expend that money and that resource. We do have availability of some mental health options, but it's not inherent or built into the system like Island County is. And I want to make sure that, and I know nobody thinks this, but I want to make sure I state this, that in no way is any of this any kind of reflection on any of staff that I have. Our staff is wonderful staff. They do a great job with what they have at their resource within the limits of the resources and the system that we have. So our staff is great. I mean, that's, you know, there are alternatives we're looking at right now. So I think everybody understands that. I want to put that out in the open there that that's, that this doesn't mean that we don't have staff that is professional or works hard to maintain a quality jail. That's not the case.
And the last thing I wanted to mention was, I understand that there is a human factor here. And that's what makes this a hard decision to make, is that there are people's lives and livelihoods involved. And I appreciate that you have been honest and open and upfront with your staff and with us about having those conversations and seeing how we can mitigate those losses if in fact we do go this way. So thank you very much for a very all-inclusive presentation.
Any other questions, or I'll go up to a couple more documents here real quick? If you actually turn to page 10, which is the very last page. So I wish I would have sent document seven to you early. I just didn't have it completed. And so you'll have to, rather than going through it in detail, I'll go through it briefly. But let's talk about 10 for a second. So 10, I think most of you have seen in some fashion at some point in time. If we stay with the jail in its current state, if that's a decision that you want us to go, there's not a lot of documentation I need to do on that because we'll take what we got, we'll readjust some scheduling, and we'll move forward within the limits of the resources we have and do that. If you, can you go back? Never mind, I can go back. So that's option number two. If we go with option number one, so to speak, and I can get it where I can reduce my staffing so I don't have one person in there ever to reduce some concerns I have about liability, then I'm looking at three additional staff, which means basically we're still running where we're at, but we're adding three staff, which increases our money. So those aren't super difficult to plan out. If we go with option number three and we go with the budgeted amount, the amount that's proposed in there, if that survives first contact, so to speak, then I have a proposal of taking some of that reallocation of resources and adding police officer positions to what we do. So in essence, if we were to contract out of jail, we have seven positions. I would be proposing we would have five positions instead of seven. We would be reducing FTs by two potentially. And if we didn't have a jail, those positions, three of those positions would be reallocated to police officer positions. So instead of sitting in a jail or maintaining a jail, those police officers would be on the street utilized for any and everything police officers can be used. It's not just because of the reduced, or because of the contract rate, which reduces our budget allocation for the jail, but also with this document that you're looking at, which I think we've talked about in some fashion before, for my purposes, I've included a reduction we've already, we're already looking at because of a revised animal control process, a reduction that we're looking at. And Patricia's going to tell you, don't look at this. When I look at my fleet, my fleet for the year, because yearly we do a fleet contribution, this year, if it survives what I'm looking at, I've reduced our yearly allocation by about $15,000 by some re, by some shifting around on our priorities. Again, Patricia tells you not to include that money. And to tell you the truth, if that money would go back to general budget, that doesn't come back to my budget based on that. So just to be clear on that. That $15,000, if I'm saving that on some fleet, it doesn't go to my budget. It goes back to general budget. I'll put it in there. The school resource officer with the school's contribution, and I think Tara had mentioned this when we talked earlier, if we're going to commit to a school resource officer, then how do we, and I don't know if she mentioned this, but I think it was something like that, how do we make sure the police are staffed up so they don't have to pull this, pull the school police officer, the school resource officer, you know, I'm saying, I'm including that, but that reduction in there by the school paying because if paying because if I can, if I can add additional staff, then I can virtually guarantee I never have to really pull that SRO for anything other than SRO duties. Although, I'm working real hard not to do that right now. But that's, I've included those reductions in there. If you look at the reductions on the right-hand side, I'd come up with the total there based on where I want it to go. If we, if you choose to contract out, I would need to have a couple of police support officers, which would be doing transports and some other duties for us, like fingerprinting and different things that we'd be working on. And three new police officers. And I would probably, and I've included a figure, you don't have the figures in here, it would include promoting an additional sergeant potentially because of a modified department structure. So, that would bring us from twenty-six to twenty-nine officers. So, if you go back here now to document number eight, and that'll be this document. So, I went back again through all the data that I could find, through Law Spic, through our local records, through information kept from whatever, and these were the numbers that I've pulled from all of those, the best I can find through historical data. So, if you look there, it gives you the years, it gives you the number of Oak Harbor commissioned police officers, which are uniformed police officers. Gives you the population, I can't tell you where everybody pulled. If you go on the internet right now and do a Google for population, you can pull like six different population numbers. City data, some people use that as a primary, but you know, I don't know where everybody got all their population numbers, I use what we've got there. Oak Harbor police officers per population, per thousand, I've got, listed some grant positions, civilian staff, the best I could find, and the animal control officers aren't included. So, if you go there and look and you see in nineteen ninety-seven, Oak Harbor had thirty commissioned police officers, they worked up from twenty-eight. Now, four of those police officers were either partially or fully funded by grants, okay? Probably a cop grant or something like that. Now, usually the way those grants work, or at least worked back then from my knowledge, was first year, you're generally a hundred percent, second year, you're down to seventy-five, third year, you're down to fifty, and something similar to that. I can't tell you exactly what it was here because I couldn't find the information from it, other than this is what it was. So, for a period of time, they're running up to two thousand and one, we had thirty police officers based on those reduced, those lower population figures, which put us at the number you see of Oak Harbor police officers per thousand population. So, that's one barometer that departments, cities and other people use as far as determining the number of officers appropriate or for a community. You can't use that as the only barometer. And I think I've talked to everybody about this, if I have a twenty-three thousand population town in a place that's got high gang activity and all that, you're gonna, you're gonna need a higher number. You know, nationally, it's like, I think I put it down or somewhere, nationally, it's like two-point-four in twenty-sixteen per thousand, so, you know. But it is one barometer, it is one piece of information you look at. So, you can visually see that, we lost the grants, but we maintained, we went down from thirty, went in two thousand and two at twenty-six, and then it started building up again, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. None of those are grant positions. We all know what happened in two thousand and eight, right? Okay, so in two thousand and eight, obviously, just like every city, including where I was at before, they probably lost officers through attrition, they went down to twenty-seven, twenty-seven, and then twenty-six in two thousand and twelve, based where we are. Meanwhile, population either stayed the same or started to grow a little bit. And then, you can see our average officers per thousand population. In two thousand and seventeen, Oak Harbor was at one-point-one-two. The national, the Washington State average, and this is not national, you can't really look at national, Washington State average in two thousand and seventeen was one-point-four-seven. If we were to add three police officers, if we decide to move forward in a contracting the jail and the money works out, we would be at one-point-two-three, I think it is? Yeah, one-point-two-three per thousand at that level. And so, that, I wanted to provide you with that data just so you'd see that. And you can see the historical numbers that we've had here. Our civilian staff has changed a little bit in there too. And of course, that would go down to eight because if the jail wasn't, was contracted out. So, those are what some of those numbers look like. And if, again, I don't have a visual, but if you guys turn to page nine, you know, what would we do as staff? So, you can see there on page nine, just a potential table of organization. That's how we would staff this if we got three police officer positions, and if we contracted out and if we, let's say, had two police support officers who were doing transport and all that kind of stuff, this is kind of what it would look like. You see the green there, those are basically new positions that would be there. And again, I wish I'd have gotten you that other document well in advance, I didn't. But if you guys go through document number six, or I'm sorry, document number seven, it talks about a lot of the things we would do with the additional staff. You know, progressive stuff we would do. It helps us keep up with a lot of the current needs, it helps us keep up with some of the resource demands that are coming up, whether it's new facilities, the new park, a lot of that kind of stuff. And I'll let you folks go through that. You know, the mayor has talked several times at different meetings about, you know, don't just bring problems, bring solutions. I've tried hard to provide solutions. Essentially, if we contract out to jail with the reallocation of resources, we would virtually stay the same budget as if we were to have the jail and move forward. So, if we have the jail and move forward, if we're at five-point-seven million, if we contract and reallocate as I've suggested, we'd still be at five-point-seven million. You know, and that's based on where we're at now, and that can fluctuate a little bit, but that's approximately about what we'd be looking at, assuming all those reallocations.
Five-point-seven with less liability and more police officers.
I mean, police officers always present liabilities anyways, but yeah. It'd be police officers on the streets.
It's a whole other workshop.
It'd be police officers out there working with people on the streets, with the community. You know, I think I've included in here, one of my plans would be to, and at some time, Oak Harbor, I think it was in those years when we had those numbers, they had somebody working downtown parks and all that kind of stuff as a pretty routine thing. We did that this summer, we had to do it in overtime for a lot of it. We mixed overtime with staff just because of where we're at. If we have the flexibility of having additional staff, we would do, and I think I put in here, I looked at, we did some looks at our overtime for two thousand and eighteen, and I looked at about twenty-nine thousand. I think I probably would not have had to pay in two thousand and eighteen if I'd had the staffing levels that I'm looking at here and if they were filled. Now, of course, we've got to get staffing up to those levels before we can assure that stuff. And you'll always have overtime. I'm not saying we're eliminating overtime, police work has overtime built in. But I could pull up that amount as I think that we, if we'd had those staffing levels and they were filled, that I probably would not have had to pay overtime for. So, that's where we're at. Any other questions?
So, what would be the next steps if, you know, we would, would want to proceed with this, or as a council, if we all like it or want to pursue what this contract would actually look like? What are we looking at for timelines or next steps?
So, I know that Island County has been looking at, you know, they have contracts, they have contracted to DOC, some stuff like that. I know they're looking at what would a contract look like with us if everybody said, let's do this. And so, I know that they're working hard on giving us something that might, what it might look like if we choose to do this. So, if, I guess I'd be looking for counsel tonight to say, hey, we really want to stay where we're at and move forward as best we can, which is option, I guess, two. Option one is, hey, we want to stay where we're at, and we understand that you have a concern about liability with staffing, so yeah, we're gonna want to look at adding three staff, or at least we want more information on that moving forward, and commit to our jail still for a period of time, whatever that time period may be. And, or option three, you know, we're looking at contracting and we believe it's worth seeing whether or not we can work this out with Island County. And then, if you give me option two, then I don't have to do any more work, and we move along. If you give me option one, I'll present you what staffing would look like. If you give me option three, I've done a lot of the backwork already, I've been working on that for quite a while. Really, we're down to, okay, I've got your direction on that, I've got to work on all the details of transition might incur. In the background, I would be doing that, in the foreground, it would be, okay, Island County, tell us what you think a contract would look like, and then I would be bringing that back to you and saying, here's what the contract would look like. And then, at some period of time here in the near future, and I would say in November, and I can't give you an exact date, I would be coming and saying, here's what it'll look like. Do you want to authorize the mayor to sign this contract and move forward with the contract situation?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to compliment you on providing options. And it makes it a lot easier for, at least for me, to make a decision. And the analytics that you have provided for each of the options seem to be solid. And I support option three of this whole package. And we've talked about this privately, spent a lot more time than just here at this session. And so, you have my support for option three.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, yes, I too have to express the sentiment, thank you for options. You know, it makes us feel as though we do have some decisions to make here, you know, and the decisions aren't already made. And the, again, the analytics that you supplied with, the options are very clear and distinct, and we have had discussions about this. I know you were very, very concerned for staff. I know that's the first thing you came to me with, and have been working diligently to try and figure out a way to get that staff dispersed, whether we be within your department or within neighboring departments. I commend you for that, for looking out for staff. I just want to read one thing out of your document number seven, since you didn't have it up on the board, for everybody to hear. It's currently my intent to commit an officer to working bike and foot patrol and some car patrol in the downtown business corps and downtown city parks. Scheduled permitting, we should be able to do this three to five days a week for several hours a day, or four to seven hours. I'm excited about this possibility. It'll pay dividends with the new park going in. You know, this is obviously a discussion that we've been having here in the community for the last year. How do we reach out to those people in our downtown corps that have come to the surface, that have been in our face per se, that have kind of put this little bit of taint on homelessness, I guess? And you and I discussed, you know, this particular as being a side effect of making this decision to contract out the jail, giving you somebody to work within your budget to address the issues that I think everybody in the community have been kind of asking to be addressed. So, I also support option number three, putting our money where it needs to be, on the ground, and also providing a safer, you know, way to house our folks who need a little assistance in the criminal side, and as well as, I think, providing a safer environment for our officers.
And if I could, just dovetail on that for just a second too, and wholly, that's exactly what, I mean, again, I think there's advantage in, I think, having more officers on the street. I also understand there's budget competition, there's competition for budget positions. You know, I'm looking, as I started doing this, and this was a separate issue from even looking at that, but as I started looking at this and I, you know, I started seeing where I could potentially do, do both things in a holistic fashion. I do want to make it clear though, that that is my intent, and that is, I think, the department. And I've got a great department, I've been, nothing but pleased for the two years I've been here with the direction that these men and women are willing to take the department. We still have constraints with constitutional issues, and I only say that because you see things out there where it's like, hey, let's not, what are they doing, let them panhandle, and that kind of stuff. I mean, we will do what we can do within the limits of what our capabilities are, but just adding officers isn't gonna solve, isn't gonna solve all the issues that somebody may see. So, you know, sometimes people don't quite understand that just because of where they've been or the lack of some education on some of that stuff. But it certainly gives us more tools and staffing available to work on those solutions.
Kind of wrapping up here, we're in the biennial budget process, and we've got this kind of timed ahead of time for it. And I guess what staff is looking for is, in the budget, it's harder to put options, now we can kind of talk about it. So, we're gonna assume the consensus is to move forward with option three, and the two thousand and nineteen and twenty budget will reflect that. Am I right, Patricia?
If the council approves a contract with Island County, yes, but if not, then it would have to be adjusted back.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of do it on the faith that Island County will be able to contract.
You're probably looking at a fairly, fairly quick update on this because Island County's also working on their budget and needs to do some visualization on that, so we'll probably talk pretty quick.
I was in Coopville today, and I heard a commissioner saying they're not leaving the courthouse until they're done with their budget tonight. One of the three senators.
And I want to make sure I clarify something too. Work release and some of that stuff will be something they implement as they work on this process, and how they do that, where they do that, you'll have input on, that's our control. Anything else for you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We will move on to the next item, Public Works. And we've got two items under that. I see our, our, and item, and our Public Works Director, Kathy Rosen. Welcome to the table. First item is Bailey's Playground in Windjammer Park.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm gonna start out with kind of introducing and giving you some history on the Bailey's Playground. In two thousand and two, there were a number of volunteers that came forward and installed a playground at Windjammer Park. And that was in memory of a four-year-old Bailey Madison Ann Johnson, who had passed away due to some complications of an illness. And it was funded and construction by an all-volunteer workforce, and some of you may have even helped out with that back then. Go to slide two. Bailey's Playground is located on the east end of Windjammer Park, south of the Little League Fields. And due to the Windjammer Park development project, Bailey's Playground had to be removed. And now, sixteen years later, many of these same volunteers who built and financed the original playground have come forward and formed a committee, and they're called the Friends of Bailey's Park, with the goal to help restore, upgrade and expand Bailey's Playground within the same area of Windjammer Park where the original playground was located. And I want to point out that throughout this whole, we've been looking at this for a number of months already, and we have had input from the landscape architect that had worked on the overall design. He's aware of it, and he kind of earmarked an area, so we're working within a perimeter that is not gonna interfere with future phases of the park as we work down towards the east side. Slide number three. The original play equipment in the playground has been saved, it's being refurbished and will be reinstalled into the playground. A new playground equipment will also be added. And the Friends of the Bailey's Playground Committee have offered to assist with the planning, with the selection of the play equipment, with the installation of the play equipment, and they're also offering to do help out with fundraising. And we're also requesting, in the two thousand and nineteen budget, we're also requesting forty-five thousand in funding for this, for this particular project. And we're estimating the entire project cost to be between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. Go to slide four. Actually, we'll go back to slide three a minute. And as you, if you look up closely, you can see much of this is the existing playground equipment repurposed. It's being, right now, it's being sandblasted and powder coated, and it'll be all nice and fresh and get brought back into the, into the park. And then, you see, here, next slide will show two, but there's some new playground equipment that we've already been looking at adding to the play area. Ready? Go to the next one. So, Bailey's Playground will be an age-appropriate for the ages three to five-year-old. And there might be some play equipment also for some older kids. This slide shows some of the new play equipment that will be added to the playground. As you can tell, it's kind of got a schooner look to it, which fits the Mariner theme down at the park. So, it's the intention of the Friends of Bailey Park Committee and park staff to have this playground installed and ready for the July third ribbon cutting of the Windjammer Park. And then, once the playground equipment is installed in that, it'll be maintained by park staff. So, staff will be bringing this item to the November seventh council meeting, and they'll be requesting council support through the signing of a resolution for this project. Any questions?
Yeah, yay.
Yay.
That's what I'm thinking in my head. No, I, yes, I mean, seeing the big playground equipment sort of deteriorate over the last even year, I'd say rapidly, and working on that myself, cleaning graffiti off of it and with my own two hands. and with my own two hands, you know, I'm just excited to have more playground equipment, nice playground equipment show up down there. It's great. I, you know, I always see lots of kids playing on what's there, what was there, you know, this last summer. So it's, somewhere prior to, it's just exciting.
Yes, and the playground was a very popular playground for the smaller children.
Yeah.
Any other questions that you made? Q. One to item number B, under Public Works, NPDES Phase II permit, comments to the state. We have our engineer Brad Booth joining us.
I think there's enough for you on that side.
And Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Back by popular demand.
More like Kathy, of course.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You have a binder that we put together for you because this is, I think, as Brad has said, this is probably the most complex permit update that we have faced, even more complex than the original permit. And you can't read the permit without having some supporting documents. And so what you have in your binder is a clean copy of the draft permit, a redline version, for those that like redline versions. There's a guidance that is referenced in the permit. And then halfway down the first page of that guidance, it references two other documents. One is the fact sheet from DOE regarding the draft permit, and the other is a document called Cities, Building Cities in the Rain. And then the final document in your binder is the comment letter that we sent to DOE in January of 2018. So we did talk about a preliminary permit in January of 2018. At that time, there was, we knew there was going to be a new section, but we didn't have the details on what that section was going to look like. And we had a white paper on it and we talked about that, I believe, at the January 2 council meeting. So our current permit will expire on July 31 of 2019. DOE reissues the permit the beginning of July, but it doesn't go into effect until August 1. So there's a month kind of overlap between the two permits. We've got this draft before us now. We did submit those, oh, and comments on this draft are due November 15. And we did submit the comments on the preliminary draft on January 18, 2018. And I believe you also got that letter in your packet for today's meeting. We're not the only city in this area that are affected. Here are a list of some of the nearby agencies, other cities, Skagit and Watkin County as well, are permities. We are the only permitty on Whidbe Island and in Island County. The proposed permit changers, there's several minor changes, education and outreach. We're going to have to evaluate the effectiveness of our public education outreach efforts a little bit differently. We're going to have different formatting for our mapping, just some minor things. But there are two grand new sections that I think are pretty significant, and that's what we're going to spend our time on today, are these two significant. One is the source control program for existing development, and the other is comprehensive stormwater planning, which is why my friend Steve is here. And I just mentioned that. I'm going to take them, I'm going to take the source control for existing development first, that's a little bit easier to get through, and then we'll get into the complexities of comprehensive planning for stormwater management. So this is a new permit section. It's site-specific. It's modeled after a requirement that Phase 1 cities like Seattle, Tacoma, Pierce County, King County had to do. It's intended to be proactive and preventative inspection-based program in trying to address pollution from existing land use activities that have the potential to impact and release pollutants into the city's stormwater system. And it relies on the city's authority to inspect those businesses and properties and, if necessary, require operational or structural changes in that business. We're required to eventually adopt an ordinance and ask or require businesses to use certain BMPs to address pollution coming from the existing land use and activities. We have to develop an inventory of certain types of businesses and properties, and then we have to go out and inspect 20% of those businesses every year. And then every complaint we get, we have to go out and do an inspection.
On this slide before, it says relies on local authorities to inspect businesses and properties and, if necessary, require operational structural. Only new businesses or old?
No, this is for existing. Old businesses. These are businesses that may have been in operation for 30 years.
New businesses would generally be covered under the development permits in the new manual for new development, the manual adopted at the end of 2016.
And this goes into effect this summer?
It will, it will go into effect, but I'll get into the dates on when we have to start doing certain things. And they're asking for a progressive compliance strategy. So first, we try to get voluntary compliance before we have to start issuing notices of violation and bringing our legal staff into the situation. So by August 1 of 2022, we have to establish the inventory and we have to adopt and begin enforcement of an ordinance, which requires the application of source control, best management practices for certain existing pollutant generating sources. When we looked at the permit in January, this date was 2021. So they have given us an extra year to do this. And then by January 1 of 2023, we're required to start implementing the inspection program where we have to go out and inspect 20% of the businesses and/or properties that are listed in our inventory and then 100% of those that we've received complaints on. And we have to implement the progressive enforcement policy again by January 1, 2023. That is, again, a year later than the preliminary draft permit we looked at in January.
Question?
Yes.
Mayor. These are, you shall?
Yes.
We shall?
We shall.
We don't have any choice or any input on this, is that correct?
Well, we have a draft permit. Comments are due November 15. So we do have, technically, we have input. How far that will go, I can't answer.
We provided input already and what was the response?
Well, we got, I don't know if it was as a result of our comments, but they did give more time, years, you know, they extended that deadline out a year for certain activities.
Have we got any kind of inventory started or do we have?
We have our business license inventory.
Okay.
And Kendall Sullivan does a lot of this work already.
Okay.
So many of the businesses already have control devices and those kinds of things that she goes out and inspects periodically.
But that's part of the question that I was getting to also, 20% of the businesses. So part of the businesses are in a multi-structured building.
So it's not 20% of all businesses. It's 20% of businesses that are on a list that's in Appendix 8 of our permit. And here are some examples.
Sole occupants of a building that have art services?
No.
No, huh? So here's a list of the types of businesses that are included in that Appendix 8. There, some of them are very broad. For example, where was that one, loading solids or liquids, loading and unloading?
It's on the right, the fourth one down, storage of liquid food waste or dangerous waste container, then storage of liquids in permanent above.
Yeah, above gun tanks. Storage or transfer outside of solid raw materials, byproducts or finished products, those kinds of things. So we'll have to have, we'll have to create an inventory of these types of businesses. So it's not every single business in the community that we're going to have to look at.
So if it's an accountant's office that doesn't have any of this stuff, they're not going to be on the list that requires inspection. I don't see the city on that list either.
We already are on the list as municipal, for municipal operations. We've had to comply, I think, from the very first permit. So some of the operational best management practices include things such as training employees regarding good housekeeping measure, proper disposal of waste. Kendall does a lot of this already with many of the restaurants and those kinds of things on how to take care of their grease and handle their solid waste out of their facility.
Excuse me, Mayor. We're going to get through this and I'm not going to interrupt you.
No, there's no chance. There's no chance.
But when I, what I, obviously, I haven't read the book, at least this book, previous one, yes. We have regulatory changes as we go along. It gets more restrictive. So when somebody is in compliance, and I'm going to give you an example, let's say that big Walmart Safeway complex there. They are in compliance, they have a site plan agreement with the city, they are total compliance there. We have to review them, but if the regulations become more restrictive, will we be required to tell them to structurally change their discharge methodology or their discharge design?
I don't know if it's necessarily the discharge design. It may be the way that they operate their business. For example...
We have a parking lot. We have a common parking lot for multiple businesses.
But it may be, they may need to change some of their operations at their loading dock or...
Can I jump in? So, Mr. Tomber, don't think about surface storm water as much as things which can be spilled onto the property that become part of the surface storm water.
Places like 7-Eleven.
Hey, where is compliance?
So, I think Kenny has some slides that have some correct examples. To give you an idea, we'll talk more about containment and secondary containment.
Yes, okay. So, but the first thing we're going to try to do is get voluntary compliance and perhaps just do some education of the employees. Sometimes that's hard. We, I know Kendall struggles with that at restaurants because there's such a turnover of staff. So we think we're good, everybody's trained, and then it's new staff and we're facing the same type of problems. But we do work really hard to get that voluntary compliance. And just kind of changing behaviors before we ever try to move into structural changes that they would have to install, such as adding secondary containment or covering storage areas. So here's secondary, an example of secondary containment on how they might, if they had grease barrels out near their dumpster or something. So rather than allowing it to spill over onto the pavement, they put it in some type of a containment system so it doesn't get onto the pavement. And they, or they could cover it so that it doesn't have rainwater washing it down into the storm drainage system. So these are kind of staff's opinion on the impacts to this. It is very site-specific, so we will be contacting businesses that have not had contact with us in the past about this issue. We are required to inspect the way they operate and possibly require them to change their operations or install structural BMPs, and it is likely to require additional staff to perform the inspections and compliance-related work. And again, that, all that starts in, we have to have the inventory together in 2022, start the inspections and enforcement in 2023. So this is the, I think, the more complex of the issues. This is a new section that requires, that has requirements that apply a more holistic view to municipal stormwater management. That's the way DOE describes it. It requires a planning approach that emphasizes protection of and improvement in the receiving water quality and beneficial uses under anticipated future developed conditions. And I might add, when we looked at this in January, we did not have the specifics of this section. We knew that they were thinking of something because they gave us a white paper, which kind of gave us some background. But we did not know what the actual requirements of the permit were going to look like. So this is the first time that staff has had a chance to look at this. There were four counties, King County, Pierce, Snohomish, and I don't remember what the other one was, that were required as part of their 2013 permit to do modeling exercises to try to find different ways to improve the receiving waters. And what they found is that the current project-by-project approach that's used, development by development, or individual lot by individual lot, those approaches are not sufficient to prevent the continued degradation of the receiving water quality. So they're wanting to look at a different way to address those issues. All of the models, all four of the counties ran multiple different models. All of the models projected that a repair and restoration and large amounts of additional stormwater detention are needed to improve the conditions of the receiving waters.
Questions? Our county doesn't have to do any of this. But their water flows to us and so we get stuck with their mess. I mean, generally, that's it.
So let's go.
And they don't have to pay a damn.
We'll cover that.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So...
Tell us how you feel about it.
The estimated cost to recover the receiving water impairment is basically hundreds of thousands per acre of watershed. And that's well beyond, everybody knows that's well beyond what anyone can afford. So one model by King County included changing land use designations and zoning as a scenario. And what they found was that those types of changes will help protect the water quality and lower the cost of the needed capital. So DOE is encouraging permities to consider this type of strategy in future planning to accommodate population increases. So what DOE is wanting us to do is look at our land use designations and zoning within the watersheds, different watersheds, to see how we might make improvements in the receiving water quality. So in your binder, you have this fact sheet, and on page 39, about halfway down the page, there's this quote. "A broader view of planning and implementation is needed in order to support and further habitat restoration needs. Policies that promote compact development with a smaller footprint, reduced impervious surfaces, natural areas within the urban core, and improved water detention can help local communities meet the Growth Management Act's goal of accommodating growth while protecting the environment." So Steve talked earlier about the conflicts within the GMA to begin with. We have had a concern that these, this permit might bring us further in conflict with GMA. This is DOE's response to that, and they have been working with Commerce to come up with this response. All right, so that's some background. Now we'll get into the specifics of what we're required to do under this proposed permit related to comprehensive stormwater planning. So the first thing we need to do is coordinate with all of our long-range plans. So I'm assuming that's our comp plan, our shoreline management plan, stormwater comp plan, all of our long-term planning documents within the city. Then they want us to do a little bit more work on low-impact development code-related requirements for stormwater action planning. I don't think there's a lot we have to do, but it is one of the requirements that we have to report on. And we will need to put together an interdisciplinary team to inform and assist the development progress and influence of the program. And we will likely end up needing additional staff, most likely in planning and mapping, as well as contracting with some consultants who have science background to help us with evaluating the impacts to receiving waters. So we need to report how many stormwater management, how stormwater management needs and the protection and improvement of receiving water health are informing the planning update processes and influencing policies and implementation strategies. So the first deadline is March 31, 2020, and we will need to report how water quality and watershed... and watershed protection were addressed during the permit cycle that we're just coming out of, 2013 through 2018, and in the updates to the comp plan and other long-range planning land use documents. And then by March 31st, 2022, we need to report how water quality and watershed protection are being addressed during the upcoming permit cycle in updates to the comp plan and other long-range land use plans. Steve, did you want to talk about where that, where we will fall?
Actually, from a cycle perspective, our next update to our comprehensive plan is due in 2024. And so on that aspect, we won't have a lot to say, certainly at the 2020 mark. By 2022, maybe a little more because we will likely have started that project by that time. The part that's not clear to me yet, and I think we'll just have to get some clarification on, is that we do have to update our shoreline master program under the state statute by 2020. And so it's likely that we'll have some coordination obligations between this permit and that effort updating it, but I haven't seen any guidance check that tells us how we're supposed to actually make that happen. So I think we'll have to do it, but I don't know how it just went.
All right, so one of the next requirements is low-impact development code-related requirements. And again, it's like the current permit we're operating under. The intent is to make LID the preferred and commonly-used approach to site development. Local codes, rules, standards must be designed to minimize impervious surfaces and the loss of native vegetation and stormwater runoff in all types of development situations. And we're to continue, we shall continue to require LID principles and LID BMPs when updating, revising, or developing new local development-related codes. Well, we did that. We've had that for over a year. That's really not going to require a lot of effort on our part. We're required to annually assess and report any newly identified administrative or regulatory barriers to implementation of LID principles or BMPs and measures to address barrier, and what we're going to do to address those barriers since we made the change in our code. And I believe our staff has done a very good job of addressing this already, so again, I don't anticipate a lot of work in this area. Stormwater management action planning. In your binder, you have the guidance for this. It's about five pages, I think, and it references two other documents, a fact sheet and Building Cities in the Rain. So that's why I put all of that stuff in a binder for you, because it's really hard to go back and try to reference things. And then if you try to find it on DOE's website, it's a maze trying to find the documents. So this is to be focused on addressing impacts from the collective development in a watershed rather than a single-site or subdivision impacts. So it's an entirely new way of trying to address impacts from development. And there are two questions that DOE is trying to have answered. How can we most strategically address existing stormwater problems? And how can we meet our future population and density targets whilst also accomplishing our water quality goals? There's three components.
Could you go back to the collective one, then? For example, could we have a collective, a watershed collective feature, let's say, someplace down in the park area? Like, the city owns part of that park down there on the Friend Marsh area? Could that be enhanced to create both water volume storage in island for habitat and for vegetation? That, are those the types of things that qualify for that general collective?
Yes, they're wanting us to look at things on a watershed basin by watershed basin and look at retrofits within those basins. And as a matter of fact, we are asking for funding to do a feasibility study of what you just described. We're asking for that in the upcoming budget.
Because some, some communities in different places around the country have used things like that as enhancement features of their park, where it's actually part of the working mechanism for stormwater management.
If you do it right, a lot of people don't even realize it's a stormwater facility. They just think it's a park in a very pleasant place.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So there's three components to the stormwater management action planning. The first is the receiving water basin assessment, then receiving water basin prioritization, and then we have to develop an action plan. So the receiving water basin assessment, we need to look at all of the existing information that's available regarding the receiving waters, and there's some confusion amongst us even as to what is a receiving water. I know the documents talk a lot about streams. We don't have any streams. You know, we have discharge to Oak Harbor Bay and out.
West Beach.
West Beach.
But it also includes wetlands.
Yes, it does include wetlands.
As receiving bodies, so we'll have to be cognizant of that as we look at the basins. And our idea that which ones discharge into wetlands and how then do we plug that into this part of the process?
So we could complete this individually or as part of a regional effort. We are the only permittee on the island, the Navy and the county. We share certain watershed basins with the county, we share some with the Navy, we share some with the county and the Navy. We're the only permittee, we're the only one that will be required to do this. However, I'm wondering if, for example, the discharge out at West Beach, is that a larger region? Is that, you know, is that something with Skagit and that we might be able to partner with them on? So that, those are questions that we need answered in terms of, you know, what do they consider region? And where there are significant gaps in knowledge, we need to develop a plan and protocol to improve the assessment. And I think this is where we might need some help from consultants, because we just don't have the staff and the expertise to do that. So by June 30th, 2022, we need to have completed the receiving water basin analysis, and then we need to start prioritizing. So based on the conditions of the receiving water and the assessment of influence of stormwater management strategies and actions, we need to receive, we need to rank the receiving waters based on priority. Which one will get the most benefit from changes, a stormwater retrofit or changes in land use designations? We must identify and rank areas where the receiving waters would benefit. Like I just mentioned, they also have some targeted or customized implementation of stormwater management actions such as source controls inspections. So those are going out and inspecting the existing land use and seeing if we could implement BMPs or structural changes that would improve the water quality, O&amp;M inspections or enhanced maintenance, public education outreach, trying to change behaviors, those kinds of things, as well as stormwater retrofits. By 12/31/2022, we could develop our stormwater management action plan for at least one high-priority area. And we need to identify what are the actions? Are there necessary retrofits required to make those improvements? What's the schedule? How are we going to fund it? Short-term, long-term actions? And what process are we going to use to adaptively manage the plan?
So read long-term monitoring when you hear adaptively manage the plan. What that really means to us is monitoring and then making changes in what we propose to do based upon those monitoring results. So is it working to the degree that you thought it was going to? If not, what are you going to do to make it work better?
This slide talks about what our, as staff, what we think the impacts will be. It will be a major planning effort. It's going to probably fall on development services staff with assistance from engineering staff and outside consultants to get that part done. We're going to have to consider as part of this land use designation, zoning changes, may need some capital projects, stormwater watershed basin retrofits, just like Council Member Ombert talked about, the possibility in Friend Marsh. It's likely to acquire, require some additional staffing, and implementation of this may be contrary to a different GMA goal of promoting a variety of residential densities and housing types.
So you were mentioning an engineer, so we're lacking engineers. I know we're advertising, and I don't know much about engineering degrees, but would we be looking for a specific engineer that has?
I think we have him right here.
Okay, good. All right, didn't know that, thank you. I mean, there's, you know.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if we had one that, glad to know that.
I know a lot of stormwater.
Good, got it, okay.
But it is an additional effort.
Right.
Which will probably require additional support staff, and it's pretty heavy on the planning side, too. And we're talking acquisition of property.
Possibly, yes.
Possibly as a tool to do this, and that's the contract with the GMA. So they want you to do all this density, but then we're going to have to turn around and MPBS is telling us, oh, put a hole in the middle here and preserve that area. So it contract, it, so it actually pushes it out more where the GMA is trying to push us in more by saying you can't build here, you can't build here because you got it protected on the basin. And so that's why we get this contradiction here.
The answer that I think that Kathy has been telling you about for quite some time as we, as we talk to you about this, the basic answer from ecology and these materials is that we can achieve the same growth projections, we can achieve the same number of units by upzoning, sort of number one, or number two, by changing that footprint. So something which presently is a housing unit that takes up this much space, cities just go ahead and allow a smaller footprint, i.e. require a smaller footprint for those, for those units, and so the leftover land, if you will, can be used towards the stormwater side of things. And I think that, at least at a theoretical level, makes a lot of sense that, I mean, you can make those things work. And on certain scales, I think it will still work. Where I think we start to have our questions is, is it necessarily a practical answer for all of the situations? Number one. Number two, it seems to remove the market and personal choice from the equation. Because I think, at least on its surface, it assumes that all individuals who need housing will want to reside in these more dense, compact units. And this is where I think it does, when we get to implementation, potentially has a conflict with that GMA goal, which tells us to provide a range of housing units for a range of individuals. And if we think about the people sitting around this table, we probably live in different kinds of housing situations that fit our particular needs at this stage in our lives. This is where I think we see this sort of running at odds with each other. Hopefully, there's better guidance that comes out on this. And then what we'll have to also understand is, if we go through a community process to help figure some of this out, and we end up in a position where we're not able to make everything compact, what are our answers to ecology? And that's, at this point, unknown.
Question on that, Mr. Powers. I take the opposite of what you just said about compressing and having one housing stack, and then you use the term leftover land. What if you personally own property in the leftover land? Your leftover land then has been designated for part of this watershed. Has the value been, that property been devalued? Has the value of that property gone down as a result of that?
I think the argument that ecology would make is that as long as you're able to yield the same number of units that you had.
Wait, wait, I'm not talking about ecology. I'm talking about you as a landlord in that leftover property. Don't we run into collision with landowners in our area that are currently in a zone? We talked about potentially rezoning. So if you're going to set aside that land as the watershed, you can't develop on it, the value of that property substantially goes down.
Let's not mix the concept of the regional solution versus what might still have to take place on the onsite solution. So as I read through this particular document, which is 12 pages back, and there's a lot of meat in there. I mean, I would encourage the council to look at it. It's actually a fairly heavy read. It takes a while to sort of pick it all apart. As I looked at that, I, what I was picking up out of that is that there will be these regional or sub-basin or basin-level things that we're going to have to try to accomplish, like building a stormwater facility in Friend Marsh or on another piece of property that we might acquire in their town. We're still going to have the obligation to have those onsite facilities. So think LID, water going back into the ground, or better yet, don't disturb the surface at all, leave it as a natural state. So I think the answer to your question, Mr. Ombert, is it potentially is not viewed as devaluing the property if you still have the tools to achieve the amount of density that you wanted to do. And that's, I realize it's a very simplistic way of looking at it. It doesn't take into account whether you can sell those units or any of those other things, so. But I think the key thing is keep those two concepts separate. What's happening on the individual piece of property for just that property versus what we might end up having to do to acquire property to have part of a regional solution.
And then the other thing is for Kathy, you just had up there, one of the things that we have to report on is we have to report on how we're going to fund these things. And we have to work that into our budget. We really don't know what we have to do. So if we don't know what we have to do at this time, how do we work that into our budget?
Well, I think.
And who's going to fund it? And we go back to our shoreline management plan where we did it with some grants. We did a DOE grant on that. Is that going to be funded partly through that kind of a mechanism?
We have no idea. You guys are going to be talking about your legislative priorities, and this may be one that you want to take forward to help get funding for this work. And this permit doesn't require us to actually implement anything within this permit cycle. We have to do all of the planning and preparation for it and, you know, list the short-term actions and the long-term actions. But I think the next permit after 2024 is when they're going to actually want us to start spending that money.
If you look up there at the long-term actions, within seven to 20 years, this fits with how we did LID. One permit cycle was remove barriers, and next permit cycle was make it mandatory for LID. That's, it looks like this is the warm-up to enact these on the next permit cycle.
So this one, we do all of the basin study, we get all of them, you identify the one project that we want to try to tackle in the next permit. And once you've identified that, that's what's going to allow you to develop that planning level estimate of the cost of it. I mean, it doesn't make budgeting for it any easier, but at least you'll be able to understand what the costs are because we will have identified the project that they will require us to implement.
And we have, all right, we have some control over that as far as proposing, okay, these are our top three projects, and then we decide which one do we want to tackle and then monitor for the next seven to 20 years, correct?
I think so. I mean, based upon what I see and hear, it's, you know, we're going to make a science-based decision as to where we think we can make the greatest impact. But I would also try to throw in there where we'd make the biggest bang for the buck.
So this is a major planning effort again. We're going to need assistance from outside. We're going to need some additional staff. We may have to change the way that our city develops, and we may have that conflict within GMA. But there are some opportunities. We talked briefly about the Friend Marsh feasibility study, which we're proposing in the next budget. So that may give us additional information and perhaps some ideas on a project, a retrofit project. And then in 2022, this may not be easy, but in And then in 2022, this, this may not be easy, but in 2022, the existing golf course drainage basin agreement, which is between the city and Island County and the golf course, that agreement expires and will have to be renegotiated. And so there may be an opportunity to work on some sort of a joint retrofit project where we can get the county to at least contribute to one of our projects.
Does that watershed, to remind you, drains to the northwest through the drainage channel through the back of a farm out to West Beach? And obviously, the county is a player in that.
This is a brand-new approach, and, you know, this permit can have impact to the way existing businesses operate, and possibly need to put in new structural best management practices, change the way we, our land develops, capital project planning and funding, the number of city staff, and we will assume costs for other governmental agencies that share a watershed with us but are not permitties and don't have the same requirements as us. And this is a draft available for comment. We are preparing a resolution, which we'll present to you at your next council meeting, that will include comments for council consideration, which can then be submitted to DOE.
Can I speak to that for a moment?
Yes.
So we've taken a stab at drafting a resolution, and the reason we did the resolution is based upon lots of council comment in the past about ecology and, and other topics where you, or LID, rather, and other topics where you've expressed frustration with ecology. We thought it'd be best for you to share your, your thoughts with them directly via resolution. And so we're taking the liberty to try to capture some things for you with respect to this permit. One of the things that we would propose to do in here, since the letter we sent in January came out under a staff signature, we would say that that's incorporated as part of this resolution, and you are reiterating those comments as if they are your own. And the second one would be that Kathy and her staff would be working on another letter that would go before the November 15th deadline. To the issue of funding, we, we included a section in here, and I'll just read this to you real quick and then pass this around. Whereas section S5C1, which is the stormwater planning thing, requires substantial amounts of work by city staff, which you need to hire new staff and outside consultants to accomplish that work. Without DOE or the state of Washington providing any funding to offset the cost to hire the staff or consultants, said lack of funding equating to an unfunded mandate. So we're, we're suggesting that you deliver that message to them about the need to have fund. Because you're right, Mr. Almberg, when they, when ecology has required us to update our shoreline master programs, the state has provided at least a nominal grant to help us with that effort. This time around, we qualify for $20,000. We'll put that money to good use to help us update our SMP. Even a nominal grant would be better than no money for, for an effort like this. So here's a, a draft to send around. We would welcome, we haven't actually sort of brought it to a close at the end. You see it just sort of fizzles off at the end. So if there are comments or suggestions that you'd like to make, just give me a call or, or send me an email or something, and we'll try to figure out how to make it work.
I heard it.
What'd you hear?
When you said, "Don't say that out loud," I heard you say it.
So I, I think in your binders, I don't think we put the appendices to the permit.
No, we did not.
I think we put the permit, which is that size, and then some supporting documents, and then the appendices are here, which you don't have, but they're online, and we just didn't do it because we wanted to add another inch of paper in there. So they're available online. One thing that's driving all of this, I've gone to some of the DOE presentations on this, they're expecting 1.7 million more people to the greater Puget Sound Area by 2040. So they're looking at, where do we put all these people? And that's what's behind all of this.
And protect the sound. Where do we put all the people and protect the sound?
We're a rock. Rock.
So when do you end this, please? We have that scheduled up for your December, November 7th meeting, so that you can take action on it well in advance of the deadline to send a, send comments to the state.
Oh, there is a webinar on November 6th. Do you know the times?
No, but we can email it out.
We'll be watching it out at Public Works in our room out there if anyone is interested in joining us. Yeah, we'll, we'll send you the link. You can probably watch it on your own computer.
And these slides? Not this. Well, my eye can't.
Okay, that's it for us.
Oh, man. Sorry.
Steve, any other questions regarding MPDES Phase 2 permit? Any other-
Is it odd that they just unloaded on this at the end, in the middle of your budget, when you're supposed to have it passed by December, and it's all unfunded? It's how you live here.
But I, I think that this permit will, won't affect our, the budget we're going into much. I think it, in, in terms of, yeah, a little bit-
Not, not the 1920.
Not, not the 1920. It's going to come after that.
Okay, any other council business?
I know, I should have had Hank, I should have had Hank wrap it up, shouldn't I? I'm sorry.
Everybody votes for Hank.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we're done.